Okay, this is the January 21st, 2025 Hutchinson City Council meeting is now in order. Mary, please call roll.
Richardson.
Here.
Garza.
Here.
Bass.
Here.
Magers.
Goss.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have Tanya Winger to do our prayer this evening. Thank you.
Before I pray, just an apology that I can't stay for the meeting. I don't like to pray and leave, but that's what I'm gonna do. So, let's pray. "God in whom we live and move and find our very being, who created this earth and all who call it home, we pause at the end of this day and the beginning of this meeting of the Hutchinson City Council to lean back into your steadfast love and saving grace. I ask your blessing on the work of these leaders and all gathered, that you would give them clarity of mind and purpose to seek the common good of all who are a part of our community. May they lead with your peace and justice, be motivated by your love for the world, and be filled with a sense of dedication and commitment to the land and the people they serve. Amen."
Thank you. Item four, proclamations. Do we have anybody from Hutch CC here tonight? Oh, perfect, okay. If you could join me at the podium.
Greg Cross.
Greg Cross, thank you. Whereas the 2024 Hutchinson Blue Dragon Football Team completed the regular season with an 11-and-1 record, and whereas the 2024 Hutchinson Community College Football Team showed what teamwork, commitment, and hard work can accomplish. And whereas on December 18th, 2024, in Canyon, Texas, the Blue Dragon Football Team, led by Coach Drew Dallas, defeated #1 Iowa Western Community College with a score of 28-23 to win their second NJCAA National Football Championship. Now therefore, I, Stacy Goss, Mayor of the Hutchinson, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim January 21st, 2025, as Hutchinson Community College Blue Dragon Football Team Day in honor of the 2024 NJCAA National Football Champions.
It is a pleasure to have you guys in our community. I played for JUGO, not football, but many years ago, and you guys do great things to change the lives of young people.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Next item, please.
Item number five, petition for long-term citizens' oral communications from the audience.
Do we have anybody who would like to speak? Please come forward and state your name. Oral communications from the audience, please limit your remarks to five minutes and to items not on the agenda. Audience members may address items on the agenda when the item is discussed by the city council.
Thank you, my name is Don Rogers. I'm with Wells Aircraft out at the airport, and I wanted to have the same sentiment that you all shared at your last meeting in reference to Cecil's report on cleaning the city streets. I thought they did an outstanding job for the first event we had, and then we had the second event we had to deal with as well. And I think it was awesome with the 33 employees and 800 man-hours and the amount of... Is that me?
Please state your name.
Okay, someone wants to land. So I'm happy to report that I agree with you, and I thought it was an outstanding job. My ask is this: We have one employee at the airport that does snow removal. We are at a disadvantage because ice gets underneath. We can't use the brim and the snow removal equipment, this standard equipment that you might see. So our 18 miles of runways, 12 miles of taxiways, and five large ramps pretty much had the airport closed on and off for two weeks during these events. My ask is, can Richard, the sole guy at the airport, maybe get some help on events like this, because he's all by himself. And I feel bad for him, he did an outstanding job with what he had to work with. So my ask would be for Richard, maybe for some help when we have that kind of event, if we have it again. Hopefully we don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else to speak in public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to item six, the consent agenda. Do we have any discussion from the council?
I read through everything, I don't have any questions.
I don't have any question. I guess the only question I would have, we have a number of appointments, I'd be curious if, of the ones that were listed, did we have multiples? You know, we had four or five people, was it, what kind of return did we have on people applying to be on boards? Was it fairly, was it better than it used to be, or is it, here's the one person that applied?
Hi, Council, Dave Satello, Director of Strategic Growth. The mayor actually inquired about this earlier today, and we had some answers for her, but short answer is no. I think compared to what we've seen, what we saw last year and the year before, when we changed the process, we had a lot of success those first two years. This year, not so much. And so we struggled to find appointments to some of those boards and commissions. And as I mentioned to the city manager and Stacy, we have new staff on board, and so getting them ready to roll out that campaign was a little wonky this year. So take full responsibility for that, and I think we can do a better job of that next year. But we're all just learning that process, staff that handles the appointments process, and then staff that appoints to those boards and commissions. And so, it's just a lot of work. But as I've always said, it's just really hard to get people to volunteer for boards and commissions, no matter what we try. We know that the first year that we changed this, and the second year, we've had a lot of folks who said, "We're just out of the odds on Facebook, and so, never something I considered, but now I'm interested," and we just didn't get that response this year. I just think we were not doing what we had done in the past, but that, most of that is on me.
After these appointments, are there any vacancies that remain?
I don't know the answer to that, but I can find out and see if there are any other vacancies.
Yeah, and I'm just curious if that means you would be kind of restarting the process to fill those as midterm, as mid-year appointments?
Yeah, yeah, a lot of times whenever the staff doesn't have any appointments, they'll just have their boards look for new people to volunteer, which is what we've tried to work against this, but we need a full board, so we move away from that, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions or comments about the consent agenda? Looking for a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent, consent agenda and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Mary, please.
Yes.
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 Item number seven, ordinance of the resolutions. A, considering ordinance authorizing reconstruct of W., West 30th Avenue from Main Street to Adams.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance. At a prior meeting, you had awarded the reconstruct project on West 30th from Main to Adams to pro-con construction. Tonight, I'm asking that you approve the ordinance authorizing bonding of that project. We are asking to bond 775,000 for project costs, so that is above the pro-con amount due to some contingencies and some water line infrastructure that will be done. So the total bonded amount is higher to allow for any additional bonding costs that might be more than anticipated, but that amount is 925,000. Hopefully, it won't take that much to bond it. We will bond this project with others probably later in the spring, such as Woody Seat. So are there any questions?
Any questions or discussion from the council? Do we have anybody here in the audience who would like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve an ordinance authorizing reconstruct of West 30th Avenue from Main to Adams and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Item 7B, considering ordinance amending Section 2-1501 regarding Housing Commission membership.
Good evening, Council. Carissa Paxton, Housing Coordinator. To provide some background here, in 2017, the Housing Commission ordinance as it exists now was amended to remove ex officio membership from the Realtors Association, the Home Builders Association, and then some other agencies, just by removing those seats altogether. But it kept a seat for New Beginnings and then one for Interfaith Housing. So today, the Housing Commission would like to extend ex officio seats to other community organizations as they see fit without having to change their ordinance each time. The new verbiage allows them the original number of ex officio seats, but doesn't bind them to a specific organization or person. So they select organizations who are working in the housing realm on an annual basis without continuing to amend their ordinance as the priorities of our community partners shift towards and away from housing-related work. Ex officios for the Housing Commission are non-voting members. They're relied upon for their local expertise and organizational perspective. They have no term limits or residency requirements. The Housing Commission would like to choose their ex officio organizations each January, and then have those organizations choose someone to represent them at the Housing Commission meetings for the year. I'm happy to stand for any questions, if you have any.
What organizations do you have in mind as an example of who they might be interested in?
So the Housing Commission meeting, I think, is maybe one of the most well-attended commission meetings that I've seen. We currently have people around the table from the United Way, SCED, Community Foundation, and then some of the original partners who, whose ex officio seats were removed, Chamber of Commerce, for instance, things like that, so. And then really, anybody, we know that people, nonprofit work, their priorities shift to and away from housing. So as housing has ramped up interest as a, as an economic development item, as a current influencer of our community, it's subject to change, so.
So really, the ordinance just brings the ordinance up to your current practices, it seems like?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak on this item? Any discussion or questions from the council? Looking for a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve an ordinance amending Section 2-1501 regarding Housing Commission membership and authorize the mayor to sign. Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss.
Item 7C, considering ordinance amending Sections 2-401 and 2-402 regarding administrative departments.
Paul Brown, City Attorney. Council, this is very much just a housekeeping matter, a section of the code that hasn't been amended in many, many years. The original section that showed the departments for the city was last amended in 1969, and the paragraph and section that follows was last amended in 1958. So it was overdue, and our city manager saw that and said, "You go take care of that." So this ordinance is to correct that and to give the proper departments. And also, the second section, 2402, was actually a part of our Charter Ordinance Number 38, which actually established our form of government, and there was a section that should have been included in, in our, in our code, and that's why it's replacing the existing section in 2402. Might also, just for your own information, you won't see dispatch on there? That's because dispatch is not a department created by ordinance. It was created by a contract between the city and the county, so that's why it's not listed. Questions from the council?
Doesn't sound like it. Is there anybody in the audience who wanted to speak on this? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I move to approve an ordinance amending Sections 2-2-401 and 2-402 regarding administrative departments and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Item 7D, consider a resolution establishing the landmark reinvestment housing incentive district.
Council, Dave Satello, once again, Director of Strategic Growth. So in front of you have a memo and a resolution to establish the landmark housing reinvestment, sorry, landmark reinvestment housing incentive district. So essentially, this is the first step of many to establishing an RHID district. You've been through this recently, and, but you mostly were on the very tail of the end of that work, because this first step was taken a while back. So what we're doing right now is saying, the City of Hutchinson believes that there is a housing shortage. Based on recent analysis, that housing shortage makes it difficult for developers to build new housing, and so it allows us to utilize RHID, which is incremental tax, to help with new development. So you've done an RHID for regular development, right, a subdivision. This one is a little bit different, so this one is for upper storage RHID. Under Senate Bill 90, it determines that the cost for reconstruction and rehab of upper storage units are reimbursable. So some of those costs include, costs include plumbing, HVAC, walls, flooring, removal of substances or materials, roofing, framing. So it helps folks utilize some of this incremental tax for some of the upper storage redevelopment. So it cannot be used for commercial use, it only allows for residential use. So in this case, we're designating that district that encompasses the landmark and beginning, just starting that process to ask for approval from the Secretary of Commerce. And then we'll have public hearings, once we are about to establish a public hearing or the district, and then another one for a development agreement. So just the very beginning of this part, that's what the resolution calls for. Happy to answer any questions. The developer is also here present, in case you're interested in hearing from them, but this is just one more step, as you've seen some of those steps we've taken in the past.
Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak on this? Any questions from the council? For Dave, or for Laura, or anybody else? I went through, I was looking for something in my email about the landmark, and you're right, we've been kind of working on this for, I don't know, since last May at least. So, you know, that work is getting ready to start, demo is getting ready to start, more work is getting ready to start, so it's really promising. And this just seems like one of those kind of paperwork things that we have to do to make it happen, so. Seeing no additional questions from anybody, I'm looking for a motion.
I move to approve a resolution establishing the landmark reinvestment housing incentive district and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Thank you.
New business, proposed draft of Chapter 16, statute.
Paul Brown, City Attorney. And Council, you've seen the memorandum on this. This is strictly a draft for your review, not asking you to take any action, ask any questions or anything else at this point. It was just, there was interest in taking a look at the revision for Chapter 16, and have done so and submitted it to you. Please, if you submit any emails directly to me, so we avoid Open Meeting Act violations. Happy to inform you, answer any questions you've got, just, just let me know. And then at some future point, when the council's ready to have this come back on an agenda, we will prepare that and place it on the agenda. So thank you.
Is it on there for us to discuss tonight and just not take an action, or?
Well, I suppose you could, but I wanted to give you some time to really digest the document.
This was a way of saying there's a lot of mumbo jumbo we gotta figure out, and then asking questions on.
Well, I can tell you, it didn't take me long to digest it. I'm not sure why we're in regulating taxis, we don't regulate other things, as, as we've talked about before. That's my stand on it. We're not regulating Uber and Lyft and the R-Cat and other forms of transportation around town. Just my not-so-humble opinion.
So you're opposed to this in theory, not, like, there's no part of it that you don't want? Don't want the whole thing?
No, no, and I think that we, we found over the last couple of years that our taxi ordinance was not enforceable, or was, we were chasing our tail to try to take care of a specific problem or operator. That, that went away kind of on its own. I'm not saying that we do away with what we have, but to try to add more things for staff to worry about and do, I'm not sure.
The only thing I would mention, and I'm not, I don't know enough about Uber or Lyft on the operation side of things, what kind of regulations they have, and what they check on drivers and equipment and whatnot. But I'm sure there is some requirements that they have to meet to use that service as an operator.
Right.
And if, if, I don't know if this is even enforceable, it's kind of an antiquated, I guess nowadays, it's kind of an antiquated way of getting transportation, I guess, but if a taxi service can operate with no regulations or oversight, but Lyft or Uber drivers have some regulations or oversight, that would be the only thing I would kind of think I need to educate myself a little bit more on.
Yeah, and I, I don't think I'm opposed to just saying, tear it all down and make it go away. I think I'm imposed, I'm opposed to us being out there trying to inspect cars monthly or have them prove who's driving. It just seems like a whole lot of...
Oh, yeah, the...
That's, that's all.
If rules are gonna be set, there has to be a mechanism for checking them, too.
Yeah, for sure.
And what makes sense.
For sure.
I don't know that Uber and Lyft would apply to this, but that seems like something that we would need to email Paul, who does not want to talk about this tonight.
I can answer that question. Uber and Lyft are regulated by the state.
Right. And so when a taxi cab come, when the company comes to permission, formation, the company is regulated by the state as a company, but not as an operating, there's no regulation about them operating as a taxi cab.
No, they don't, they don't regulate.
So they just, like, they have to file LLC, EI, and all that regular stuff. So it does fall on us to, or the opportunity falls to us to regulate because it's not regulated by the state. I think it's fair to at least consider this. If the, if you feel like the last ordinance didn't have enough teeth, my question would be, does this one have enough teeth for us to enforce? And I feel like it does. I've read over it a number of times. I think it models Wichita, Kansas City, there's some language in there that matches some other cities that allows us to, that allows us to regulate it. If anything, I would think that this would give us less work to our city staff because it will be easier for them to follow compared to the last one, where, I mean, in that case specifically, we were actively trying to be taken advantage of by that, that person's trying to take advantage of us, so. And the need is there. We heard from Benjamin Anderson, the CEO of Hutch Regional, who said that this is a need. He sees it every day. He sees it every day. I would bet that the clinic would echo that as well. Any further discussion from the council before we move on to the next item?
If this goes, who regulates it? Who in the City of Hutch doesn't?
That's what we're trying to figure out. This is just kind of an open discussion right now. But yeah, that's a question.
I think it's partly the size of the city we are. It's kind of like, do we want our hands in that? I mean, I know people use taxis, I know people use Uber and Lyft when and if they're available. And I know people use our public transportation. And I don't know if our public transportation could expand their services to help. I don't, I don't know. It just.
I think the county just cut their budget, so I don't know that they would be able to expand.
I'll mull it over a while longer. But I just feel like, gosh, we have so much more we could be doing.
It just makes me think of all of the hours of conversation that we had last year about Axel's Taxi and all of the issues that they caused. But sure, I feel like they're probably well-known in the community. So I think this might be the answer, but I, this is our time to mull it over like.
Yeah, I certainly will. I'm not hard and fast either way, but those were my initial thoughts about it.
And I would offer too, that one of the things that Paul and I have discussed, that if we were to put something like this into effect, we'd have it be effective six months or so after it's been approved, just to allow those businesses time to adjust to that. So whatever you guys decide, one way or the other.
And we only have, what, the new taxi service that just came into effect? Is that the only one we have or do we have any more?
No, there's a few more.
There's a few more.
Paul, do you know? Isn't it two more?
Roadrunner and Hutch Taxi.
Okay.
Well, two others.
Next item.
Item number eighty, A Downtown Update by Sarah Diamond with Downtown Hutch.
Good evening, council. I'm Deborah Tuftel with the Hutchinson Reno County Chamber of Commerce at one seventeen North Walnut. And before Sarah comes up to make a presentation about the downtown master plan, I just want to thank you as a partner that has endeavored with the downtown master plan process with our downtown Hutch division for the last two and a half years. And we're really proud of how far we have come with the master plan to date and some of the key projects that are starting to materialize as a result of it. Sarah has a great presentation put together that is in part due to the work of the many partners. And you'll start hearing about some of the layers as we peel back the onion of the committee work that's happening with the master plan. But just thank you for your vote of confidence in allowing us to be stewards of those dollars and a partner with you in this work. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to downtown manager Sarah Diamond.
Okay, perfect. As Debbie mentioned, I am Sarah Diamond, the downtown manager with Downtown Hutch and the Hutchinson Reno County Chamber of Commerce. There are several items that I want to share with you this evening. Talking about the vision of downtown, the vision is since incorporating downtown Hutchinson into our programming, we continue to enhance the sergeonic marketing and promotion of the community with specific targeted marketing and promotion of downtown as a vital core of the local community. Also, be extensively sharing with you our work and engagement with the downtown master plan, explaining the subcommittee work that's instrumentally involved with that. Our community partners visit with you on some updates related to our incentives without walls loan program, the DHRP committee. And related to education and outreach, I'm continuously involved and engaged in educational and outreach learning opportunities, not only in the community, locally and regionally throughout the year. There are several events that happen and promotions that happen throughout the year in downtown Hutch. I'm excited to share with you some of our business growth and expansion statistics or facts that we have found. There have been seventy-eight new businesses in downtown Hutchinson since 2019. Several of those businesses over the past year have expanded their business downtown or have moved from other locations to downtown.
Sarah, can you move over and speak into the mic?
Sorry, thank you. Felt like I was. I feel like this vision of downtown Hutchinson is very inspiring. This vision came from the work that was found in the strategic downtown master plan. And that is that downtown Hutch is a thriving and dynamic cultural hub at the heart of the community. It's home to vibrant retail, dining, entertainment, and business destinations with outdoor, indoor, and outdoor spaces, downtown living, and community pride. This work, vital to downtown Hutchinson, would not be possible without the support of the city of Hutchinson and the support of our other partners. I want to explain to you that what our involved, downtown Hutchinson's involvement is with the work of the master plan and what we have done to execute the work of the master plan. About two years ago, we formed the technical committee to organize and execute the work of the downtown master plan. The members of the technical committee include Deborah Tuftel, Sarah Diamond, Jackson Swer, Greg Fast, Aubrey Patterson, Laura Meyer-Dick, Carrie Mayu, Tony Finley, Dave Satello, Matt Williams, and Seth Farley. This work is used to help guide the process. The committee is involved in evaluating the current state of downtown with the master plan. We've identified opportunities and constraints through the master plan, engaged residents and property owners, which was done through an online survey, public forums that we have held at the Memorial Hall, and stakeholder groups. We refine these ideas based on the input we received. And we know that the Star Bonds will be an anchor in the part of our work with executing the downtown master plan. The progress that's been made in 2024 includes forming four subcommittees. Here to talk about two of them are Tony Finley, which relates to the design and placemaking, and Matt Williams, related to the policy.
Thank you, Sarah. Tony Finley, Hutchinson Recreation Commission. Just want to thank the council and chamber and all our partners for giving Hutch Rec the opportunity to lead the work in the space of design and placemaking. You can see up there how we're approaching this. We had our first subgroup committee meeting today. That meeting saw over fifteen small businesses represented at that meeting to discuss what these, what these things look like. We went anywhere from identifying catalyst sites that would promote or help us reach our vision of downtown, to what the maintenance program looks like, to public gathering spaces and all of the things. And so excited group, excited to be part of it, and thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you, Sarah. Matt Williams, Director of Community Development for the City of Hutchinson. I wanted to provide a quick update on the policy subcommittee. This subcommittee meets monthly to discuss different items from the master plan related to the city or that the city has a key role in. On the screen, you can see a few of the items that we've worked on in 2024. For 2025, our focus is going to be on tackling, looking at some zoning overlays for downtown, looking into festival streets, and replacing downtown furniture. We'll also continue supporting the rehabilitation of the landmark and Memorial Hall through the Star Bond process.
The other two subgroups or subareas of the tech, or of, related to the technical committee and the downtown master plan work include protocol, which is comprised of our technical committee work and partnerships and outreach. Related to our community partnerships, we are continuously working to build stronger relationships with our community partners. This progress will, this will continue to progress through implementation and execution of the downtown master plan. We're working with local partners to promote various agency events, and efforts are being made to expand and further the experience of all downtown events. And also related to sharing grant and loan opportunities with our downtown businesses and stakeholders. I want to share with you a little bit about our incentives without walls program, or also known as the IWW loan program. Downtown Hutchinson manages IWW loan process, loans and program, which is serviced or supported by Kansas Main Street. We are currently servicing sixteen loans for downtown businesses, and three loans were granted just in 2024. That includes the Body Shop Spa, which is the image that you see, Harley's Bicycles, and Downtown Automotive. Over the past decade, we've seen fifty-seven new jobs that have been created since the beginning, beginning the IWW loan process in downtown Hutchinson. And we continue to receive an increase in the number of businesses who are inquiring about the IWW loan program. The DHRP committee is involved in reviewing and approving the IWW loans. The four areas that make up the Main Street focus for downtown Hutch include governance, promotions, economic vitality, and design. The communications of the downtown master plan, this committee will be instrumentally involved in helping me relay that information and engage the community in the downtown master plan work. As the downtown manager, I regularly attend the quarterly Kansas Main Street trainings. I'm proud to say that November fifth through sixth, we will be hosting downtown Hutchinson in partnership with Kansas Main Street, will be hosting a quarterly training held here in downtown Hutch. The key focus of this training will be special event planning, budgeting, and evaluation. I also continuously engage in local and regional educational and training opportunities. This past year, in 2024, Kansas Main Street Specialist Robert McLaughlin held presentations and walking tours that were open to downtown Hutchinson businesses. And we're currently working with Robert on an upper-level space presentation for downtown businesses and business owners on different opportunities and helping them see the different ways that they can restore and revitalize their downtown space. Also in 2024, we were chosen by Kansas Main Street to host a transformational workshop that was held by Jonathan Stone with Main Street America. This was an extensive process where he dug deep into our master plan work that was generated from the community and in Olson Studios in Dallas, Texas. The two strategies that he identified from this workshop in research that he dug into further with the downtown master plan is that downtown Hutch is a neighborhood and authentically Hutch. Placemaking presentations with Harvester director, Harvester Arts Director Kristen Beal. This included a group of downtown stakeholders and business owners who intended a placemaking tour in downtown Wichita. This was held back in August. Downtown Hutch is instrumentally involved in supporting a grant partnership with Hutchinson Community Foundation and Hutch Rec to execute this placemaking work in DCI Park. You'll see that there are several events that happen annually in downtown Hutchinson. These are events that are not only happening in downtown Hutchinson, but are also supported by downtown Hutch. And these are, some of these events specifically related to the Patriots Day Parade and the Jubilee and the Light of Hutch Christmas Parade and Festival. These are events that we have been trying to expand and grow each year. So you'll see that this past year, when we held the downtown Hutch Christmas Festival and Parade, it was much more extensive than it was the year prior. We have the similar plans and goals with the July fourth day parade and Jubilee to make that a day-long, family-friendly event. Some of the trends that we saw in 2024 related to business growth and expansion were that eight new businesses came to downtown Hutchinson. Five businesses relocated or expanded, and three businesses in 2024 have undergone facade renovations, and three buildings were performed, or three businesses performed building renovation or construction projects. In closing, the next steps or key projects in 2025 include continuing to share with business owners about grant opportunities available through the Kansas Department of Commerce and Kansas Main Street, which includes the Rooms Grant for upper-level housing space, IWW loans, and HEAL Grants. Downtown Hutchinson will continue to leverage new and other grant and loan opportunities when possible by sharing those with our local downtown business owners. The Star Bonds related to Memorial Hall and the landmark projects, the Salt City Business College renovation that will be taking place this year, and the Hope Building, which is looking for a new buyer. The technical committee will continue to meet related to the downtown master plan. We will continue to have meaningful collaboration with our community partners in engaging their input throughout the process. The communications related to the downtown master plan will be regularly engaging our DHRP committee, meeting regularly as quarterly, and continuously assessing opportunities to inform and engage the community in the downtown master plan work.
And that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Very thorough.
I think that the work that you guys have done really speaks for itself, looking at just the most recent examples of the night parade and the continuation and expansion of the third Thursday events, which I think some people are surprised that they do actually happen all winter long too. A lot of the information here was new to me today, some of the numbers and the businesses that have taken advantage of the program. So that's really nice to see. I think when we were first presented with the downtown master plan, there's so much to do, it was kind of like, where do you start? So I appreciate Matt outlining what you guys are going to be working on over the next, what your next priorities are. So that's really nice to hear that you're, what your next steps are.
Thank you, Mayor.
Looks daunting. Thank you.
I do want to also mention in closing that I'm continuously looking at ways to, as I talked about, communication, so media releases, but also engage in the community and their input. So they don't, a person doesn't, in the community does not have to serve on the technical committee or one of our subgroups if there's ideas or ways that you think we can grow and enhance not only our events and promotions related to downtown and our businesses, but also ways, just your vision and going forward in this plan over the next five to 10 years. So I'm continuously scheduling conversations with civic groups and organizations or clubs and presenting at breakfasts and lunch and different events where we can continuously update the community on the downtown master plan work and execution.
Well, if you take any input from five-year-olds, Everett will tell you he wants a bounce house at every single event.
Okay.
It's very important to him.
We're so grateful for all of the support of the City of Hutchinson, Hutch Rec. We have numerous partners that have helped us expand and grow some of these events over the past year. And so it's very exciting to see that continue to go forward with that.
Thank you for your work, Sarah. Appreciate it.
Next item, please.
Hello, Carissa Paxton, Housing Coordinator. So just a really brief rundown of the annual report that is included in your packet. The Land Bank did not acquire any new properties this year. The annual share of sale was very competitive, which is a great indicator of a strong real estate market. The Land Bank typically takes properties that aren't as desired. We had a really good amount.
We had a really good amount of interest in all of the properties that fit within the land bank's parameters and strategic plan. So us not being awarded any of those at the auction is probably a great indicator of, of downtown, Southern Hutchinson revitalization. We sold one property this year to someone who's going to place a modular home on it and use it as their primary residence. We provided first rights of refusal on three properties to someone who is going to use them for multifamily developments. And we have one property under contract that will result in a home being moved from East 13th Avenue, placed onto one of our lots on West 6th Avenue instead of being demolished. The land bank has re-engaged with the KU School of Architecture and Design to update our pre-approved plans and provide us with the triplex option. We hope to have these plans available on our website for infill developers to access and use easily this year. We're also planning on increasing our social media presence to highlight the land bank lots and their potential uses. As far as the budget goes, it's mostly the same. We increased the allocation for property acquisition to account for rising values of land, and we'll be utilizing our ARPA allocation from the Housing Commission to bolster our infill incentive offerings. The land bank ordinance requires council approval of the annual report and budget. I'm happy to stand for questions if you have any.
Did you guys have a property that was given back to you this year?
Not in my tenure here.
Okay.
All the properties currently in the land bank are vacant lots.
Yes.
Any additional questions or comments from council? Seeing, oh, I guess we don't have a motion.
Yes. It's on the next page.
Oh, thank you. Seeing no additional discussion, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the land bank annual report for 2024.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul, do we need to open the hearing, or is this just a straight continuation?
Actually, at the last meeting, the public hearing was concluded.
Okay. Thank you.
Meeting, Council, Jason Lady Building Official. And I thought we were going in another direction tonight, so I brought up the wrong. Set a page. So this is from the December 17th. This is an update on 3405 East 4th Avenue, and this is an update from the September, or December 17th meeting, which was a public hearing that we held to condemn or repair the structure at 3405 East 4th Avenue. Trying to locate the mouse here. So just a reminder, this is just a reminder of public hearing procedures, staff presentation, questions for staff, owner representative, presentation, questions for the owner representative, public comment, close of public hearing, and then motion on proposed resolution for city council. So on December 17th, 2024, city council voted to table the hearing, providing thirty days to the owner to present a plan of action to building inspection staff. During that December 17th meeting, Mr. Razor of FNHLLC stated that the shoring plans could be submitted to the city the following day, and the shoring plan was ready to commence. Staff did receive the shoring plans. They were received by the Building Inspection Department on January 10th, 2025, and an application for the shoring was applied for on January 17th, 2025. As of today, a permit for that shoring plan has been released. The shoring has began out there on site. The contractor was out there executing that shoring plan today. To date, no other plans have been received to address the building violations, i.e. any architectural plans, engineering plans, fire protection plans, anything of that sort. Now, we do have a set of, or a demo application which has been applied for, and we are waiting. That's for the south portion of the collapsed portion of the structure. So that has been applied for, and that contractor has told us that he could probably execute that by the end of the week, once the shoring is complete. So the shoring is anticipated, anticipated to be completed by Thursday, and then that contractor will mobilize all of his equipment to get down here to be able to execute the demolition on the south portion of the building, the collapsed portion of the building. So a little bit of background continued. Some of the things we discussed during the last meeting, the fire line that was out there at the time was really non-existent because it was not working. So that fire line has been repaired to the structure. Now, the sprinkler system inside the building is, even though that fire line is to the structure right now, the sprinkler system is not in working order, has not been inspected or anything of that nature. The majority of the dirt, which you'll see some, buy some photos here in a few minutes, the majority of the dirt has been removed from the inside. No other repairs have been completed to date. This is just a little comparison slide. Like I said, the fire line's been repaired to the structure, the majority of the dirt's been removed, the shoring plan has been submitted, and the shoring permit has been issued, and that work has begun on site. However, on the other side, some of the fire protection systems that we've discussed have not been addressed, fire alarm systems, and these are kind of the major things in the building that need to be addressed with this structure. Fire alarm system has not been addressed, no plans for enclosing or restoration of the structure have been submitted. No other work has been completed to date, and note that the property taxes have not been paid from the date of 2021. I do believe half the property taxes have been paid in 2021, but I'd have to follow up on that. So some of the discussion we previously discussed in a letter from Sarah Seif of Landmark Architects, we discussed that this is possibly an unlimited area building and that this structure would not need a sprinkler system. After reviewing code and taking a look at some things, I was in disagreement with that kind of upfront, but we, you know, wanted to go back and completely evaluate it and make sure we had things right in accordance with the building code. So in accordance with the building code, an unlimited area building has to have sixty feet or greater to the lot line all the way around the building. So that's what this diagram's right here for you. And as you see in this slide right here, there are some portions where you go from nine feet to twenty-eight feet to twenty-one feet, thirty-eight, eighteen, fifty-one, and then you can actually see a little bit portion of that building all the way down there at the bottom is actually over the lot line. So staff's determination is that city staff has inspected and declared the structure at 3405 East 4th Avenue to be an unsafe and dangerous structure as defined by Chapter 21, Article 7, unsafe and dangerous buildings of the, building regulations as adopted by the city of Hutchinson. Staff's recommendation tonight is for city council to approve the resolution to condemn 3405 East 4th Avenue as an unsafe and dangerous structure as presented previously at the last meeting on December 17th, and that the property owner be given until February 18th, 2025 to provide complete building plans and obtain a permit to repair or demolish and remove the condemned structure and all construction debris with the requirement of a cash bond. That February 18th, 2025 be the next date for the city council to review the progress of the rehabilitation or demolition of the structure. These are just some updated photos as of January 16th. So this is the current view of the south loading dock, that collapsed portion of the structure that we're talking about. This is the west side of the building, so we're viewing from south to north here. And you can see, like I said, there was a majority of that dirt that has been removed that Mr. Razor has removed from the building. You can see a little bit of portion right down there to the center. Down the middle here, all that dirt's pretty well gone. You get over here to the east side, this is the worm piles over there on the east side. So there is quite a bit of dirt left over there. There is a significant amount of that dirt that has been removed, but there's still a lot to remove over there on the east side at the same time, and it's still present. One of the questions that came up during some previous conversations, the previous meetings was fire load. You know, one of the questions, big questions that have risen out of this whole thing is what is there, this is a worm farm, what is in there to burn? You know, part of the building code is that, you know, we have these structures and we have a certain, you know, certain parameters that the code set for the type of construction that you have, for the size of the building, for the height of the building, for, and so we take a look at all these things and we put them together, and that determines of what type of protection you need on a building. So it isn't necessarily the fire load that's present, even though this is, is, would be considered an F2 low-hazard industrial. However, you know, once we issue a certificate of occupancy, I can't police, and my staff cannot police what an individual brings in and out of this building. So just to take a look at things tonight, and I did talk with Mr. Razor about this, and Mr. Razor did say that, you know, he's willing to get this stuff out of the building and reduce the fire load within that building. But I do want to make a note that that's the reason for the building code. That's why this structure in particular, this type of structure, the size of the structure, the type of construction, the occupancy, all that does require a fire sprinkler system because we, we just can't police that. And here's some things that I've found within this building that would present a fire load. I mean, we have bags and pallets, and you see the piles of wood there. There's some trusses that were at the end of the building. There's a lot of housekeeping and cleanup that, that would need to be done in the structure that would not be in accordance with current property maintenance code. You see these, all these materials, so there's these bags that are sitting on pallets, but you also have other pallets sitting in some back rooms and things like that, and a lot of materials that are combustible materials. So there is combustible materials in the facility, even though we're dealing with a facility that's primarily consumed in there by dirt, you know? So that's all I have for my presentation tonight. Do you have any questions for staff?
I was out there today, and there's, those dirt piles still on the south side. Weren't those supposed to be removed as well?
On the south, so we've talked a little bit about those on the south side as long as, so what we kind of come up with is that those two gates right there on the south side that lead into that south yard, if we were to section that off with some fencing to separate kind of the demolition from the remaining of what they need to do out there to get their equipment out, to, to work through whatever their operation and process is, that that dirt would be allowed to stay there, and we could separate the demolition from whatever their operation.
I was just making sure it wasn't dirt from inside the building we were adding to that. I didn't look like it, but I wasn't sure, so.
Yeah, I mean, you have that little portion that's actually out on Airport Road that we discussed, and Matt and I have been discussing that a little bit, and we still need to come up with a solution for that and talk with Mr. Razor about it, but, and there has been consideration to maybe allow that temporarily just to work through these processes.
Okay.
If, if the city moves forward with condemnation, is the owner, representative, or tenant able to continue to remove their product from the building, or is it off limits other than construction first of all?
You know, I think we take all things into consideration. The shoring and, and the safety of the structure is what we really need to focus on. I mean, yes, there is a piece of the structure where you're not allowed to really work with inside the building because it is an unsafe and dangerous structure, but, you know, what portion of it is really unsafe and dangerous to the point that we can't at least remove them, allow them to remove their material and, and get it out, take it to another location, and still be able to operate? I don't think it's something we want to completely shut down, but I think it's something that we want to watch closely and make sure we don't have ten operators in there operating. You know, we got one guy going in and out with a loader and, and getting that material and getting out of the building.
Does that increase our, sorry, does that increase our liability if we condemn it and then allow them to continue working on the inside?
Not really.
Okay.
I mean, you know, we condemn a lot of structures and, and allow people to go in and get their personal possessions and, and things of that nature. As long as the shoring's in place and, and we've taken the safety precautions, I don't think that would increase our liability, you know? But that's something staff will have to work through and, and obviously discuss with Paul as well.
Any further questions from council? Before we hear from the owner or the representative? Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
I have to leave the glasses off because I, I can see you without them, but I can't see you with them on, and I can't see this without it. My name is Pat Devaney. I am the owner of the entity that owns the building, Hutch Building LLC. Earlier today, I met with Jason for some time, and I want to present this in two ways. I reviewed the minutes from last meeting, and I took notes when I was here for the December 17th meeting. And there are certain things that present a misleading and are misstating facts. And I went through these with him today, and they give you a misleading impression. The first one has to do with a statement that was made that there had been multiple violations since 2013. That's in your minutes. Jason said that. So I went through it with him today because I didn't have information. Jason and I went through it, and there are some code violations. In nineteen, from nineteen, 2019 until, and I stopped everything the day that the building had the partial collapse on, I think it was June 19th or 20th of this year, of 2024. There were seven code violations over this five-year period, six-year period. Five of them were for grass being over twelve inches tall, each of which was resolved within a week or two. And to show you how minor this stuff was, like, you get a notice on March 20, March 27th, we got a notice, and Jason can give you this, or I can give this to the secretary, that it hadn't been mowed yet. I don't know how many people mow in March, but I mean... I don't know how many people mow in March, but I mean, so we mowed it, and so five of those were resolved that way. Two others had to do with people who had abandoned trucks on the parking lot, and so we got the trucks removed. They weren't our trucks, somebody else just abandoned the stuff there. The point I'm emphasizing is that not once before June, or July seventeenth, did I or Hutchinson Building receive any notice of a code violation for anything inside the building. There was never any violation for anything inside the building at that time. And so the way you read this, that it was, the way it was said, you would think there were code violations inside the building at that time that we'd been apprised of. We have not, and there were none that were ever sent to us. The second thing, there was a statement that there was no electrical service in the building. Earlier today, I showed Jason the last ten years' worth of bills that I've paid for the electrical service. He's seen the canceled checks and he's seen the bills. To explain the electrical service, when it was run by Eaton and things, it was a big manufacturing plant, and they had a huge electrical service. When ADM wanted to put their grain in there, they didn't want that service in there, so they took that service out and put in a smaller service, which is still there and which I've been paying for, for the last ten years. So there is electrical service in the building, and from what I understand, it is significant, it is sufficient enough to handle lighting and things like that that they think they'll need. Obviously, the engineers will have to go through things and see, but the statement that there was no electrical service was wrong. At the last meeting, there was a statement made that Dan and his people had been moving more material into the building after it was agreed that they would just be taking material out. That statement was wrong. I think he understands that. Now, what had happened was that they would clear out an area on the east side because it's easier to take the material out of the east side because you can go out the exits there. And so they took material from the, I'm sorry, the west side. They took material from the east side and moved it over there, and so for some reason he thought they were piling more material in, but it was just moving the material to make it easier to get out. There has never been any material put back in the building, so that statement was wrong. And so I just wanted to clear the air on those, and I think Jason and I talked about this, and if he wants to comment further, that's, that's fine. To talk about what's happened since that time, at the last meeting, your minutes reflected, Dan said he would have the shoring contract to the building people the next day. He did. He didn't say he would have it, plans and things, because he had to get those from the other people. With, they have worked very hard to get this done, to get the shoring stuff, but with the engineering, people taking time off, the storms and things, it's just been hard to get it done. Within the next, hopefully by Friday, maybe by Monday, they will have, the shoring should be finished tomorrow. The man who's going to take it out, he had an issue today, he had frostbite on his fingers, I think he told you, and so he's going to be down in the next few days. And so everything was contingent upon getting that down so that the engineers can come in and evaluate what needs to be done. And we were at the mercy of the weather, the holiday season and things, and so it's been delayed, but it's not from lack of trying. I mean, he burns up my phone trying to get the, call these people, call these people. So anyway, he needs time to get the engineers in there, and then he can make an evaluation. Now, a lot of people, the city put in their things that they don't think it's economically feasible to rehab the building. They don't understand his business and what the building does for him. He needs, it's basically a farm inside, and what he needs is a lot of space. You can't get that space somewhere else. This is a big open space. You've got, from Jason's pictures, you could see on the east side, there is an eight-hundred-foot wide open lane. There's nothing in there. I mean, the worms are there now, but I mean, you have a big open space. He needs that so you can spread the worms out and let them grow. He can spend more money than I would think is smart, and he can spend more money than anybody else because it works for his business. If you look at what he's done, there's a company called Pivot Bio, and they, I don't know if any of you have ever heard of them. It's one of the bigger companies doing sustainable fertilizer and things. I mean, his product works better than theirs, and they're a huge company. He has the potential, if he's given the opportunity to see if he can rehab the building to satisfy them, he can create something really good here. But, I mean, it depends upon, you're giving him the opportunity. He's not delayed, but he needs time to get the engineers in. They make their evaluation, we go. The other thing that needs to be done is, you've got these worms in there, somebody needs to be allowed, I've talked to Jason about this, and I think he's a little more negative than positive, these worms have to be fed. If you don't feed these worms and water them, they are going to die. All the value that he has there is going to be gone. And it can be done with an hour or two a week. They want somebody to come watch it. There is absolutely no safety risk, especially after the collapsed area is taken out. Go down these lines, these rows, and put water and food on it. I mean, it just needs to be done, and that's how you save the collateral. I don't know what they're worth, but I know Dan has an idea that they're worth a huge amount of money, and that's all going to be irreparably lost if you can't water them. And there's no reason, safety or otherwise, that they shouldn't be allowed to water those, those worms and to save the collateral. If you have questions for me, I'd like to answer whatever I can.
Yeah, I, I have a question. So prior to June of twenty-four, when the building collapsed on the south end, the only communications you had from the city on code violations were grass and trucks being parked in the parking lot or abandoned in the parking lot?
Yes.
You had no other communications from the city on code violations?
Jason gave me the list, and that's, you see him, is that right, Jason?
That was for code enforcement violations. That is not, that is just not having a certificate of occupancy.
Okay, so we have two different entities. We have the building, and we have the business operating in the building.
That's right.
So a couple of things. One, we really shouldn't be weighing in a decision based on whether the financial capability, it's, it's just code, rules are rules. It has nothing to do with financial capabilities. It's, it's something that we like to take into consideration, but when it comes to building codes, whether someone can or can't afford it, or whether it means they're going to make millions of dollars or not make millions of dollars, or whether it makes financial sense for them to repair it or not, it should not be a factor for us. Whether, hey, the building's worth a million, you got to put five million in it, it's not worth it, that's not our call. That's, that's the business owner's call. They want to throw the money into it, that's fine. What our call is, looking at patterns, looking at information that's been provided, communication, and productivity. And there's, there's some things that you've brought up that are important to know in regards to communication and what you're aware of. There's things that are being ignored on. I mean, if, if the tenant, the business operator, has been operating illegally to run their business, why is it our fault that they can't benefit from operating illegally by ducking and dodging the city when they're supposed to have an occupancy permit?
I agree with you there. That's all happened, and now he's trying to fix everything. I, I mean, I can't go back. I started talking with him back in two thousand twenty-three, he wanted to buy the building. So fine, and so we've let things go, and then when this happened in June, everything changed. But he's trying to do, bring everything up to date. Now, I mean, that's, I'm just saying, give him the chance to do that. I mean, if you don't want to, I guess I can't. I don't have, I have no interest in the business, you know?
I understand.
And so I'm just saying, if he's trying to do what's right, give him the opportunity and see if he can. And it, since this meeting in December, I mean, he's spent lots of time, and he's spending lots of money to take that collapsed part out. I mean, I could have just gone in there and destroyed the whole building, but I want to give him the chance. And like, if you condemn it now, I mean, I'm sure his financing goes away, but, I mean, that's beside the point. I mean, there's no reason to condemn it right now. When he has a chance to come in here, get the engineers to say, all right, this is what needs to be done. He's been meeting with contractors, and they've talked about it, and Jason's been out there, and he's sat through these meetings. And so they know what needs to be done, and then they have to agree with the engineers, and, you know, Jason might have a different opinion than the engineers, and somebody will make a decision as to who's right or wrong on that. And then, but I think it would be in everyone's best interest to at least give him the chance to make things right.
The, going back to the, and I'm playing devil's advocate here, I'm being, I'm being a mean guy here, but going back to the pattern, there's a number of things that need to be done to the building, and we couldn't get it shored up on the south end, but there are another, a number of other things that are low-hanging fruit that could have shown, that can show, if it's been done in the last month, hey, I'm trying. I'm communicating well, I'm getting some of the exit lights done, I can't do it all at once, but I'm biting this elephant off one piece at a time.
He is doing that, I think he can probably speak to that because I've seen the invoices for the fire extinguishers he's purchased. He's talked to Jason about the different types of exit lights he can put in as opposed to different, he, I'm not the one to talk about that.
I understand, I understand. And we've got two different situ, this is an awkward situation because you're the building owner. At the end of the day, right now, you're the one we're talking to in regards to condemnation and possible demolition of the building, but he's the owner, he's the operator, possible future owner, and it's on him to try to show what can be done and what, it's, it's, it's a two-part deal. Really, we need to be talking to you, but at the same time, he's the one doing the improvements to the building.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
My issue is, what's been done since the side of the building collapsed? And the answer to that is nothing until we forced an issue on December seventeenth. It's frustrating to me. I don't like, and, and, and Dan knows that we gave him time. He called in a panic in July when we started pressing the issue. We gave him time, and then here we are, and there's still no plan from July or June. I mean, if my building collapses, you can bet that will be my life, figuring out how to fix my building.
The day after it collapsed in June, I was down here. I had arranged, I was going to tear it down. I started talking with him, and he said, well, you can do this, we can take this out. He said, he showed me where it wasn't damaged as far as the structure, and he said, give me a chance to do it. So we had, I can't think of his name right now, he's from Salina, he was up there, then Carl Britz, who's going to do the removal of the collapsed area. I talked with him about it, and so we've been talking the whole time. It hasn't gotten done, but, I mean, it wasn't just the December seventeenth meeting that was the issue. I mean, it was getting everything in order. We started having engineers from McPherson, Earl and Company, I think is the name of it, they were down here in October. They're, they weren't comfortable doing it because they didn't have the proper type of structural engineer. I mean, I don't know, there are different types of structural engineers, I don't know that, but they didn't have somebody they felt comfortable doing that, and so getting professionals and with the workload they have, it's difficult. And we're at a point now where the collapsed area is going to be removed within seven days, I'll say, I think much quicker, but that way, then you can make, you can get good information, and your work is only as good as your information. You have to have that, and so you can get something to work with. Nobody's trying to delay it.
So if the shoring's supposed to be done in, say, seven days?
Shoring should be done.
You said by Thursday, but now it's delayed a little bit?
No, the shoring is being done now, it might be done tomorrow. That, that's just the shoring. The removal of the collapsed area, the guy has the issue with his frostbite in his fingers, he said he can do it in two days. Well, let's just say it takes a week from now, and so it's done next Wednesday, or next Tuesday or something. I mean, I, I don't know when it'll be done.
And how soon after that are the engineers scheduled to come in? Are they not scheduled yet?
I can't answer that because I've, I've never talked to them.
So just.
They asked for twenty days.
Twenty days.
After, after it was down, to get it into their schedule, and that's DZ out of which it's all.
So, I guess two things. So are you taking care of fixing, paying for the repairs on the building, or are you Dan?
So I've been paying for it right now.
Okay.
If we go to condemn, then I need to seriously rethink that.
Okay, so another, I guess another issue for me too is, you've owned the building, I guess you talked about buying the building twenty-three, who was, who was responsible with property taxes that haven't been paid since twenty-one? I mean, to me, that shows.
It's all part of the overall structure that we haven't.
That property taxes have to do with the structure?
Yeah, I mean, what he's going to pay me is part of the property taxes to reimburse me for those, because he's the one who's been in there, I haven't.
So he's, he's responsible for the property taxes? Yes or no?
The property taxes will be paid if I can execute this purchase agreement.
So what's the plan for purchase, for the execution of the purchase agreement?
Not to have the condemned building?
Okay.
I would put priority on paying the property taxes and adjust your purchase agreement based on that, because property taxes is non-negotiable. Whether you pay for it and he pays you more, or he pays for it, and you, whatever it is, it shouldn't be sitting there left unpaid since halfway through twenty-one. I mean, it's not, it shouldn't be, oh, I'm going to pay it if I buy the building, and I'm not going to pay it until he decides.
Well, he's not going to pay unless he buys the building. I mean, I, I understand that.
But in reality, though, you're responsible for the property taxes since you're the owner, and should have been taken.
The entity is responsible for the property taxes.
Well, yeah, but you're the owner of the building, correct?
The entity is, yes, and I own.
So you're, yeah, so you're responsible, so those should have been paid regardless of what's going on on the other side, correct? Yes.
They, they are due.
Yes. And so those need to be taken care of sooner than later. I mean, to me, that's your responsibility because you own it.
I have to make a decision about that. I mean, I, I hate to be cute with you, but I mean.
And we have a ma, decision to make too, and if you're having to make a decision about not paying them or paying them, I mean, that comes into play for us as well.
Okay.
How much is the back taxes?
Probably, probably twenty thousand dollars.
And then an additional thirty-nine hundred is owed to the city? Is that what it was? Where did I read thirty-nine hundred?
Yeah, that was for some code to, to fix some things that the city had to pay for. That's been paid, I'm assuming, since our last meeting, right?
I don't know anything about this.
I, I saw that number too, Stacy, and it was for the remediation of some issues.
Okay.
I've never seen anything about it. I don't know a thing about it. Did you send me anything?
Okay, forget about it. There's a lot of pages in this packet, so I, I remember reading that number in taxes, but it could have been on another part. So essentially, we have two options, two paths forward. One is, we move forward with the, and Dana, please stay up here because I, I think we do want to hear from you, but, so the one option is we move forward with the resolution as is. This would mean that one of you has to bond the shoring, the demo, and then complete the other work, or you have the opportunity to bond it and then demo the whole thing. That's one option. The other option is to essentially continue the process that we have done for the past thirty days, which is to let you do the work without being bonded. But, but neither one of these changes the scope of the work, so right now, you're in the process of shoring the building, and that should be done, like you said, tomorrow. The demolition will come right after, the engineers fifteen days later. So either we grossly miscalculated the process, and the thirty days was never enough time to begin with, or there were delays within getting things done, and, and maybe they were on a. or there were delays within getting things done, and, and maybe they were unavoidable, and I understand. But, um, what process are you guys wanting us to go with? Are you wanting, because it sounds like you're considering just walking away from the whole thing? So-
So, the letter I submitted from P E C at the last meeting stated that they weren't expecting to arrive until about twenty days after January seventeenth, so after demo to begin with. So, um, I don't think it was ever expected that we were gonna be a hundred percent done today. Um, I would have liked it to already be demoed today, um, but it is never gonna be done today. Um, so at the very least, I'd like thirty more days, but I'd really prefer sixty. Um, that way, um, on December twentieth, I engaged F P N C. They're a fire, um, protection engineering firm out of Kansas City. Um, so they have been working on this, um, both, I mean, egress plans, fire extinguisher plans, um, lighting sprinkler. Um, their report's not quite done yet, um, they need at least twenty more days. Um, but also trying to coordinate some visits on that too. Um, and in that, we still may decide that, yes, we do need to go the fire extinguisher route, or, or sorry, fire sprinkler route, or everybody's on board with, with something else. But right now, that's just not finished yet.
My impression from speaking with Mr. Lady is that the sprinklers are going to be required. Is that correct?
My impression is, yes.
Okay.
Is there anything that would not make that requirement? Because of the sixty-foot?
Yeah, there are some exceptions to the code, I'll say sixty-four foot, if you'd like me to-
Yeah.
Do you have any more questions for me?
Probably.
Don't run away.
So, there are some exceptions to the code. Um, about seventy-five percent of the building, um, has to have, still have the sixty-foot frontage. But then, um, if you're, still have that forty feet, or if you still have that, if you have the sixty feet, then you're okay, period. Um, if you have forty feet, then you can do some exceptions where you have some three-hour walls put in there. But your seventy-five percent of the building still has to have that sixty, uh, foot frontage. Um, but you can see, you know, with the slide I presented earlier, I mean, you got areas of this building that nine feet to the lot line. And when I was talking to the engineer over in Kansas City that Dan's referring to, um, in his and I's discussion, he had referred to the fact that they were forty feet away from the other building. Um, and he was talking about the three-hour wall that was constructed, um, in relation to the other building on the, on the warehouse side over there. Um, not on the, not on the thirty-four oh five, uh, side. So, I mean, the code is clear that in relation to the building that Dan has, it still has to be forty feet away from that lot line to get those exceptions. Or he has to build a three-hour anywhere that's not within that forty feet. He would have to build, or still would have to be sprinkled, actually, because if you can't get that forty feet, you still have to sprinkle it. If you can get that forty feet, then you gotta build a three-hour wall, because you either have to have the protection with the forty feet and the three-hour wall, or sixty feet, period. Otherwise, it's sprinkler. Um, there are some, you know, things that he and I ran through as far as the existing building code, but, you know, in any of his interpretations of, of the code, um, really, we are in disagreement. So, I don't think there's any way we reach that requirement of an unlimited area of building, because I just don't think it meets any facet of the code.
We did get a letter from F P C about an hour before the meeting. And at this point, I think it has, I had more questions on it than answers, so I haven't shared it yet. But, I feel like in the next couple of weeks, there's gonna be more clarity on that. And regardless of that, um, already reached out on a plumber on getting systems set, or, um, getting systems tested, um, as well as approved antifreeze. There's been a lot of changes within antifreeze for fire systems in the last decade. Approved antifreeze is, um, also some heat options. So, it's not like nothing's happening on that, but it's still a short period of time in a busy time of the year. But, and again, F P C was engaged on the twentieth of December, um, to start looking at this and provide guidance. Because even without the sprink, or even with the sprinklers, there's still egress questions, like, can we have the lines, the rose worms, or does that have to get broken up? Um, there's lighting questions on red light versus the L E D light, um, and calculating that foot candles too. So, it was more than just one thing. Um, and then, the fire extinguishers will be recertified by Thursday.
Any additional questions or comments from council? Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this topic?
You come back up to the mic, please, sir. You could have gone anywhere in Kansas to have this business. When did you come here to have this business in Hutch, Kansas?
Originally, it was because of the building space.
Yeah, speak up a little bit.
It was the building space.
Oh, it's building space.
Having enough room to do it. Um, and, I mean, as the last six months have, have shown that it's still, it provides a competitive advantage, um, that we don't have elsewhere.
Um, but when you came to Hutchinson and to start this business of the worm farm, you have no way of knowing that this building's gonna fall apart on you.
Right.
I mean, you know.
No, I mean, I mean, there's a lot of things that didn't go as, I mean-
As planned?
Yeah, as planned, and there are some very extenuating circumstances that have nothing to do with worms that were going on at the exact same time that created plenty of distraction as well, um, financial and time. Um, so, it, it hasn't necessarily, and also, you know, in the last week, I've looked back at some things, and you know, in twenty-one, twenty-three, you know, the business as it sits today didn't exist then. Right. Like, just the aspect of providing extracts to farmers, that was a concept five years ago that was barely even heard of in the U S, um, let alone what it is.
Well, here's my whole point. We're not in the business to run people out of, out of, uh, out of business. Um, but we have, you have to understand, we have citizens of this state, of the city, not state, that, uh, give us the, the, uh, responsibility to make sure everybody does it by the rules.
I understand.
I'm having a really, really hard time on this, because we don't have much industry now, and my whole point. That's why I sit so quiet, I think everything out. And I'm, we're not in the business to run somebody out of business. And I'm really, really curious of why you picked Hutch, and I was hoping you'd say it's the people here, you know? But that's, that's here and there. Um, but we have a really, really hard decision, because we, we don't wanna run people out of business. I don't wanna see you go out of business, but we have to go by the codes, we have to do the codes. And we, we, it's, it's not an easy decision.
I understand that, it's-
How many people do you employ?
Uh, we've reduced it, so we're only at four right now, depending on what happens.
Mr. Inspector, Mr., uh, can you go up there beside him? Now, we did, at one time, we gave him the opportunity to work inside this building as long as he had one person in there, is that right? Am I wrong or right? Do we have that? Some kind of agreement with that?
Well, we've given the opportunity to remove the product out of the building.
I see.
And that he could have staff in there taking the product out to remove it, yes.
And I think, I, I guess maybe I caught that wrong, that we was only letting them have one person in there with a tractor to move the stuff out or something like that, I don't know, maybe I heard that sound wrong.
We moved our, after this happened, we moved our screener, um, outside. So, the only thing that's really going on is taking material out and some feeding of worms at different times has happened.
So, my whole point is, this is how much time we gotta give you until it comes up to the safety code? And you, uh, in your opinion, how long, he has to have the fire extinguisher fixed? He has to have the, the building wall fixed, and all that kinda stuff to, uh, to make it safe, right?
Yes.
Right? I'm talking, um, man, I'm so bad with names, so, no, him, um, he's, he, he works for us too. So, in your opinion, he has to have all this done before he, he becomes, he gets a certificate of occupancy?
Yes.
Occupancy, right? And, uh, we're talking what, I don't know the numbers, three hundred thousand, two hundred thousand? Would him nor come up?
You can't, don't use financial numbers in a consideration on this.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I-
Yeah.
You gotta be careful of that.
No problem.
I, you know, from my perspective as a code official, um, the financials never fall into anything that we factor in. I mean, it has to be the code, and regardless of whether an individual can afford something or not.
Right, right.
Um, we just can't take it into a factor-
It has to be code, that's the bottom line.
It has to be code.
Right.
We can't put a number on what, uh, that life safety cost when we're talking about health, safety, welfare.
I agree with you.
Uh, maybe you're thinking, um, Steve, about since July. I think, I think the plan was to shut, to, to not allow him to work in there because of the safety issues. I think that was allowed until November.
Okay.
And then, we started pushing, and that's when all the talk about, well, maybe we oughta fix the building.
Right.
That's my interpretation.
I had a message from the contractor in September that they were getting ready to start. Um, so, I was fully expecting that the demo portion, portion was going to happen. Um, and that was something that Mr. Devaney had coordinated, so. And then, yes, that did pause when it, um, after we gave a proposal and the timelines that we needed, um, to have engineering and have demo done. And instead, it was, that was declined and put up for condemnation, then, yes, everything paused. Um, but, I mean, there is a lot of work that has been going on, and I truly believe that in the next thirty days, it becomes much more visible to that public eye, I mean, in the next seven days. And that's why I'd ask for at least thirty, but sixty would be preferred with engineers and architects.
No. Condemnation, if we go condemnation, is the word you're using, is there's no turning back. It's, that means commendation, that we're, we're gonna tear the building down, am I right or wrong?
No.
Okay. Condemnation, that means that we're gonna look at having another hearing to decide, right?
So, what the resolution would allow for is for you to make a determination and I, of whether the building is condemned, would be condemned as an unsafe and dangerous structure.
Okay.
And whether you as the council would deem it as an unsafe and dangerous structure. I've already done that from my perspective as a code official. And, and to me, according to the city of Hutchinson's code, it is an unsafe and dangerous structure. Um, you know what, what your charge would be here is, under the resolution, would be to order the demo of the building or repair of the building. So, that would allot the time, um, to, and, and that would also add the, um, that's what I'm looking for, the, the bond in there, yes, thank you. Um, so that would also add the bond in there. Um, so we would allow for the bond to make sure that this building either gets revitalized or demoed at some point, regardless of whether Mr. Razor and Mr. Devaney does it. Um, so, um, that would order the, the demo or repair, and then, they would have time from that point forward to, um, come back and see whether any progress has been made, or whether they're just gonna demo it themselves. And if no progress is made, much like, you know, the hearings with Adrian, um, you know, progress was made in that instance, and the city was the one that had to go forward with the demolition, so.
So, if the, if the, if the shoring's done and the demo's done, are we, do we still consider it an unsafe structure at that point, or is it not?
Yeah, in accordance with code, it's still, it's still being unsafe and dangerous structure. I mean, we've still got open walls, we've still got a lot of things that are not in accordance with code, that are not in accordance with the property maintenance standards. Um, there's, there's still a lot of violations out there. And as well, um, and just real quick to one of Mr. Devaney's comments, um, that they had received, uh, no, uh, correspondence prior to, um, the collapse of the building. Um, two thousand twenty-one, Mr. Razor did apply for a certificate of occupancy. Um, and maybe this was not relayed over to Mr. Devaney or mailed out to Mr. Devaney, but, uh, there was, uh, correspondence between inspection staff and Mr. Razor. He pro, he provided the application to our staff. Um, and then, at some point, communications broke down, and nothing was ever done. And a letter was sent to Mr. Razor telling him that he could not occupy the building, um, with this business. So, there was, just to, just to make a note on that, there was some, uh, communication prior to the collapse in June.
All right, let me get to, uh, really what I'm really getting at here. Probably ain't gonna like what I'm gonna say, but I say everything what I say, that's why I sit here and think everything out. For years, we had a lot of buildings in downtown Hutchinson that had windows blown out, had things falling over the cars. But we let that, those buildings go until they came with some programs to help them out. I have a little problem, I'll tell you how I really feel. I have a little problem with we doing that, letting that happen. Now, all of a sudden, we're coming down on, which we should, and we should have done a long time ago. We treat one building different than we treat the other building. So, I don't know whether where the building is because where it's located, or what. But for years, we had let several buildings that I know, when I've been here since I've been sixteen years old, had the windows blown out all over the streets. People complained that the cars of the building was, the glass was falling on them and stuff like that. Now, I understand we have to have codes and all that. Those buildings that were having the glass blown out of them and, and stuff like that, they had the same thing, they had to go by the codes. But fortunately, they got a break. They went through some programs that we had and got refurbished and got redone. There was a building here that needed an elevator. We helped somehow, and that's the problem, me being a council member, I don't know all the rules, and then I don't understand all the rules. We have a lot of programs in Hutch that help businesses get through their, their problems. And many that have no money, and many, I don't know why, because I don't understand the process of all the, uh, programs we have in Hutch. I do think we don't treat all buildings the same. We don't treat everybody fair. And I think we, we have to look at that when, when this gentleman's tried, I think he is, he wants to try to keep the business, you know, I have a problem taking a business and taking, even if it had one employee. That's one more employee we have, that we didn't have before. And the man wants to try to keep his business here. He could have gone anywhere in Kansas to do it. But we're sitting here telling him, you're gone, buddy. You don't take that building and clean it up, you're gone. I have a real problem with that, and I have a real problem with, we have to treat everybody the same. These buildings that we had before, were, I mean, my mind, I could see the window, the glass blown out already, but they got help. So, in my mind, I have, I could see what you're trying to say. And I mean, I'm all, I might be all washed up, but I'm in there with fairness. Treat everybody the same. Whether you live in the south end of town, or you live in the north end of town, everybody should be treated the same. And every building that they have in this town should be treated the same. And in my opinion, we haven't done that. So, I have a real hot time, I think we should give the man, do you have two documents here? One that we give him, how, what's the one that we give him more time on? What's the one we give him more time on, what's that one? You said it, Mayor, what were the, the one we have is, is what?
Um, what I was reading?
What's the one we give him more time on?
Um, essentially, we just tabled this until a future meeting. The other option is, um, in the packet on page two-six-five, um, the action requested, um, there's a paragraph.
So, what you're saying, the one-
And that's the one that bond, that requires a bond and requires, gives him thirty days, but we can change the thirty days, right? Or no?
Yes, we could change the thirty days, we don't have to go with the thirty days.
So, it gives us X number of days for him to repair. Yeah, as a sample, um, to repair or demolish.
You see, you're putting us in a bad situation. I wanna help you, but when you get a deadline, you have to go through with it. I don't wanna see you- I don't wanna see you leave. I don't wanna see that one employee, whatever the cost might be. But you're giving us a hard time. But I do think we need to treat everybody the same. Every building the same, regardless where it's at in Hutchison, Kansas. So, sometimes I hate speaking up because I don't wanna say what I think, but I have to because I represent the people. In fact, I represent the buildings that we have here. Um, Steven's building, great building, great, he got some help, it's a beautiful structure today. I think he even got the swimming pool wired. But that was all done by help, bonds, and whatever the case will be, but I don't understand all that stuff. I don't understand the programs we have. I don't even know the programs that we have would help you. I don't know. But I have to tell you what I think. And for me to sit here, you're gone, and then we had those other buildings' windows blown out at one time? No, man, that's, that's hard for me to swallow. So, I might be throwing my political career away by saying what I think, but I have to say what I think, and everybody knows me. I say what I think and how I feel. So, it was up to me, I would give you the more time, but, but you have to get it done. You have to get it done. Because I wanna get a ten million calls tomorrow telling me you're an idiot for doing this, but I'm also representative that I have to say the truth. So, I said my piece, but that's how I feel, we have to treat everybody the same. And we have had buildings in this town who are, are in bad shape, but they got programs to help them. Not everybody gets that chance, or not everybody understands how to get the program. We're not doing a good job of information in our, our people that work here and have buildings here. We're not getting enough information to represent them, to say, hey, you know, there's a bond over here you can get to help you with your building? I think that's what we have a little problem with, and maybe because I just don't understand it. I'm just a little guy that works every day, working man, that goes to work every day and come back. I try to understand it, but I don't. And I try to get it done to understand more. So, that's what I have to say, and I've thought about, you know, people, I don't sleep. Because the things that the city does that I'm responsible for, when I became a city commissioner, I came responsible for forty-some thousand people. And sometimes that forty-some thousand people don't give me no sleep. Sometimes that forty thousand people give me white hair, and I did a good job of it. But I have to say what I have to say. My vision is that we give you more time, but we can't keep going like we did the atrium. I understand we did the atrium, we just can't do it. But we have to treat everybody the same. That's what I have to say. And I, and when I get speaking, I know I go around and around and around, but I do say what I think. That's all I got, Mayor.
I, I'd like to, I think Enrico has a, some, a point, and before you speak, um, my preference would be to table this for a future meeting, if it's two weeks or another thirty days. If the only consider, if, if only for the consideration that the estimated cost of demolition and asbestos abatement is one million dollars. Um, and then underneath that, this is on page two six six, that's where I read the thirty, thirty-nine, uh, thirty-seven for nuisance abatement, so it wasn't taxes, it was nuisance abatement, but, um, so if we move to, um, require the bond and, um, require the, the work, um, my concern is that, uh, that it won't happen. And then we're, we're looking at the same situation that we're currently in with the atrium, which is, we're gonna add that million dollars, or whatever it ends up being, when it's all said and done, we're gonna add that to the tax rolls, which then has three years to, um, come to pay, be paid. Um, and then if it's not paid, it's gonna go to auction, and we're unlikely to, um, be made whole, uh, if it goes to auction. Um, so that's my biggest concern, is it feels like there are steps being made. Maybe they're not as much as we wanted to see, um, but there are steps being made, contracts in place. And, and I'm, I would give you the benefit of the doubt, um, about weather and the holidays. Um, I do think it was bad timing, but, um, this is Kansas, so the weather's always unpredictable. We do have a good week of weather, um, for working outside, um, coming up in the next week or two weeks, ten-day forecast looks good. That's my two cents on this. Um, that million-dollar price tag is really hard to swallow. We just went through this process, and we aren't, we just had, um, they're not even done yet, so. Mr. Villegas.
Go ahead.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council, Enrico Villegas, City Manager. Um, this discussion is very hard for, uh, for multiple people, including myself. Um, it, and, in particular, um, with this building or other structures, you have individual rights and then community rights. Um, with buildings that are blighted or unsafe and dangerous, that does start to infringe upon the community's rights. Um, and so for our, our discussion for tonight, if you condemn the structure or not, um, you could always grant a hundred and twenty days or longer. But the point being here is that the accountability measure is in place, that something will happen. Because if it comes back in two weeks or a month from now, will it be the same discussion again? I don't know. Obviously, it is Kansas, and we're always subject to more freak weather, freak weather. Uh, but if, if the baseline of it is condemned and we can at least start to move forward, at least we know that part was taken care of. I'm not advising one way or the other, I'm just throwing that out there. Um, but the code does allow you for more than just thirty days. It's either one twenty unless otherwise extended by the city council. Um, and leading, leading up to this, originally, the city was going to board up the facility. Um, Mr. Razor had agreed that thirty days was enough time, um, that obviously didn't work out. Um, but we ended up not boarding up the facility because we were having issues with our contractor, so he had more, more time than we had originally agreed to. Um, so there's a, a lot of dynamics here to consider, um, but the part of the accountability piece is whatever the laws that are in our ordinance, the accountability is also on us that we carry them out. Um, and that's why these conversations are also so difficult to make. Um, so, uh, just trying to throw out, um, extra information for you all to consider. But I would also stand for any questions if you have any for me.
So, if we adopt the resolution and we give a hundred and twenty days, when would the bond become due?
Um, Paul?
It should be posted at the time that the resolution is passed.
So, just my two cents, I, I, you know, this is one of these things I struggled with the last time because I, I don't wanna shut a business down either. I'd be willing to table this for another thirty days. I don't wanna go any farther than that because I think that just allows more time to procrastinate and stretch it out farther, and then we're back in the same boat when we get here. Some of the things I wanna look at, though, is like the building to the west, I think we need to be, look at their interest. So, one of the things that I would want done is all of that fire hazard, the pallets, et cetera, to be moved away from that, so there's not a fire hazard at that point. The property tax is paid, which I think is non-negotiable, which should have been taken care of years ago. Um, and then the, and the shoring and the, the demo, which I know is gonna be done in the next week. And then you said the engineers within twenty days. That would be the, for me to be able to table it, if that could all be accomplished, that's just my two cents.
And my, my two cents will probably be bigger. Uh, I'm gonna agree with Garza a hundred percent. We need to start being consistent. What do you think Mr. Joseph is sitting there watching this, saying, we just did this to the atrium? The difference is, he has a business. One thing that's different, Mr. Joseph had architecture plan, architecture stamp plans to do with that building. We went ahead and knocked it down anyway. So, I do think we need to be fair with how we handle businesses. And the only reason that I still am willing to maybe give a little more time is because there's a business operating there. Um, I still am not sure what we've been doing since Ju, June or July, since the windstorm came. But even since two thousand twenty-one, that number just came, that, that date just came out with the, the certificate of occupancy. What have you done since twenty-one to try to get the city off your back?
Honestly, there's been a lot of just surviving to, until this year, and being involved in two litigious kiss, cases in two different states for your kids takes a lot of time away and a lot of money, and so I was just trying to survive. This year was all about, I mean, our summer on was about cleanup and getting in a better spot, and well, plans changed.
Uh, Dan, and, and, you know, I, I think we oughta go ahead, I, I, you know, this is changing from what I said the last time because I think that you have, uh, you know, if you do have investors, I think that e, e, even if we condemn it and we give you six months for a plan or a bond or whatever, I think they're gonna be okay with that because you have time.
I don't think that.
Uh, I mean, I, I just want some assurances that we're gonna move forward.
Demo is, I mean, shoring is almost done, demo is right there. Um, we throw anything else in it, and, I mean, this has been a complicated enough situation. Um, a lot more behind the scenes, but we're at a point of progress will be visible to the public very quickly. I mean, within days, I feel.
Okay, so those, those are my two cents, and.
I'd like to open this back up to, um, public comment. Did you have a public comment, sir? Please state your name and address at the podium.
Someone left their phones up here. Uh, Joel Rome. I'm, uh, resident here in Hutch, three O A D Sherman Street. I also, um, am a general contractor, had the, uh, privilege of walking the, the, the project site with, uh, Dan and, um, Jason not too long ago, and, um, I didn't, I can't say I, I, I didn't go through every single inch of that building, but just about, you know? And, uh, I can definitely see he's got a project on his hands for sure. But I also know that, uh, what he's doing, you know, I do believe in the farming side of things because I grew up here in Kansas, born and raised, my dad owns a farm, and so was always looking for a way to, you know, not use pesticides, not use chemicals to grow what he used to grow, so I do believe in what he's doing. Um, but I also have twelve years of inspections and engineering background, and I respect the code, and I respect, uh, what the city is doing or wants to do as far as, uh, that goes. I would definitely, um, be for tabling this, giving him at least thirty days. Um, speaking with him, uh, we did have a plan to clean up, do some of the basic housekeeping. Um, and discussions of, you know, getting other contractors in there to do some of the basic stuff that you guys sent out on that list, you know, like lights, you know, egress windows or egress, uh, pathways, stuff like that. Um, I think he, he understands what needs to be done. I think he's tackling the, the, the stuff that's bigger, you know, like, for example, the stuff that's, um, I would consider, um, danger to the public, which is that, that portion of building that's collapsed. Um, some of the smaller stuff, like you had mentioned, exit signs, lighting. I think because of the nature of his business, it kinda gets kind of dicey because of the worms and things that they need. Um, so I definitely see that end. I did, uh, as a contractor, I did, um, give, uh, give my price to him. He, he, he wasn't, uh, again, we're not the cheapest in town, but we definitely do good work. Um, he understands the scope of work, just the amount of size of building he has. I think it's gonna definitely take, uh, a lot of, uh, finances to, to complete it. But I think he has the willpower, and I hope he has the, um, the willingness to stay in business here in Hutch. One thing I will say as a citizen, he definitely pays taxes. You know, I think that's definitely something that I'd like to see in the next few weeks, if possible, for him to, uh, get that current. Um, and as a public citizen, um, I would definitely be for giving him at least an extension of thirty days, seeing, uh, if he gets the small things completed alongside the bigger things, like the shoring and the demo of that building or that portion of. Um, so, anyways, that's my two cents. No questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe.
I got a question real quick, last one. How, how do you, what do you feed worms? How you feed them?
Um, they get fed, um, a mix that has brewer's grain for making beer, no alcohol in it, but, um, along with.
You pour in the dirt? What? I mean, the worms are in the dirt, do you pour?
It gets shoveled onto it.
Excuse me?
Uh, it gets shoveled onto it, and then we have a mix that has a little bit of hemp, a little bit of roughage, so it's a ration that they get.
Okay.
Um, and that changes a little bit depending on the seasonality.
Okay. Just wondering. Thank you.
The, uh, you know, Greg made some comments, and Mr. Garza made some comments in regards to, you know, making it equal every, everyone. The, the difficult thing with that is, is each person that owns a property or entity that owns a property is gonna show different levels of being productive on making changes or different patterns, different communication styles, and all those weigh into a factor in regards to how we move forward. Every property is unique. Different areas of the city have different incentive programs. There's incentive programs that he has available in regards to property tax abatements that aren't available to people worth of eleven.
Okay.
There's all these programs out there, but trying to make everything cut and dry i, is gonna take the, the, the human aspect out of it a little bit, which, that's fine. And we've talked about streamlining the process in regards to making sure it's, it's as equitable each decision. But what makes a difference, every property is unique. Every violation's unique, every person and how they interact and what changes they make to the property is unique. Um, we really, in regards to this situation, um, the business that's operating in it, again, has nothing to do with the code violations on the building. What it does have to do with is, um, looking at patterns for interacting with the city. We've been pushing for years that our inspectors, fire department, engineers, planning and zoning, all have a more, uh, approachable bedside manner for business development and construction. We also have a responsibility, when they are offering leeway and they draw a line, that we have to back them when, if they're being taken advantage of on their leeway. So, if people aren't communicating with them for years, or they're ducking and dodging, and they're not being pro, proactive in engaging our city staff on what can be done. Because, I mean, a project like this is an elephant, right? So, if we, if, if, if inspector comes in and says, you gotta change out a hundred doors, you say, I can't even order a hundred doors in a month, I can get five. Just communicate that, show productivity. If they're interacting with the customer or the entity saying, hey, I appreciate that you're trying to do something, you're showing that you're trying, I'm gonna work with you. When people stop showing that they're trying, we need to back the city staff and say, wait a minute, they're doing what they're at, what we're asking them to do, and they're being taken advantage of. And there's something to be, there's something to be said about that as well. Um, with that said, I'm okay with tabling this to show more activity on the project. I'm not okay with the property tax where the delinquent payment to the city being left open. Now, everyone, now, I think everyone's given their two, you've got eight cents worth as of right now.
Eight cents worth. Um, I have a question for Mr. Brown about the taxes. So, the current taxes owed are from twenty twenty-one. So, this would, this property would go to auction in this year?
I believe it's been changed to five years.
For commercials?
Mm-hmm, because I called on it this morning.
Well, then you know it's been changed to five years.
I was verbally told, I wasn't sending an email or anything official.
Okay, so it would go to auction next year. So, if we went through our whole process and we ended up tacking on the million dollars, um, and it goes unpaid. and it goes unpaid, this timeline is a little less than what we would potentially see on the atrium. I just wanted to talk through that. I, I'm going to move to table this item until, what's our second meeting of February?
The 18th.
Until February 18th. And that needs a second.
I would say of that.
Richardson?
Yes.
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 Yes. I would like to take a 10-minute recess at this time. Do we have to vote on that?
You stated.
Do we have to vote on that? No. Okay. And we will move on to the next item. This is item nine E. Matt, could you let them know that we're, okay, thank you.
Best years, I haven't drank yet. Huh?
You can have my sandwich too.
Yeah, give him a new one, please. Some gremlin will take it in water. You got the sandwich too, Gremlin.
I snore that.
Good evening again, council. So this is an update on unsafe dangerous structure. What was deemed as an unsafe dangerous structure at 2100 South Bonebreak Street. And so this is a update on that facility. On October 15th, 2019, council passed a resolution, that resolution was number 2019 R19, finding the residential structure and commercial structure known as Bernard's Restaurant and Catering located at 2100 South Bonebreak Street to be unsafe and dangerous and directing them to be repaired or removed and the premises made safe and secure. The resolution required the owners to begin repair or removal of the structures within a 30-day period and continue repair or removal until the structures were no longer unsafe and dangerous. So on that, on, on October, or August 17th, 2019, the structure was declared unsafe by the building official. On October 15th, 2019, that resolution was passed by the city council. On November 19th, 2019, a progress meeting was held in which 90 days extension was granted. At that point, began a cycle of extensions until March 2022. On March 1st, 2022, council elected to remove this structure from the demolition list. Then on April 17th, 2023, a permit to re-roof was obtained. That expired in 2024 with no work completed at that time. And then on October 2024, just an update on this, it was approved by the State of Kansas Historic Site Board. And in January 2025, this property was listed on the National Registry, Register of Historic Places. Back to that March 1st, 2022, if we could, real quick. The city council met to review the progress on the structure for the eighth time. Izzy Rivera, then the building official at the time, showed photos of the property, stated little work had been done, stated that the structures continued to deteriorate and recommended demolition. At that time, no permits had yet been pulled in for any repairs of the commercial structure and no repair had been done. The project manager working on the behalf of the property owner stated that an engineer and contractor had been secured to make repairs. The potential of getting the commercial structure listed on the state's register of historic places was discussed at that meeting, which has been completed at this time. There was a list of things at that meeting, not only the potential of getting placed on the state historic, but also the national historic and then a number of things to shore up the structure and a number of other things on that list to bring the building back into compliance. Getting the structure on the listed could make the property eligible for grants. Council ultimately voted to remove the residential structure from the demo list and, and remove the commercial structure from the demo list upon receiving a permit that had been approved based on the design engineer's shoring plan. There was a shoring plan submitted at that time by an engineer. Don't believe that shoring plan was ever executed. There is no record of that in the, in the city records of whether that was ever executed and inspected. And then, so the, upon receiving a permit and had been approved based on the design engineer's shoring plan to secure the facility in a safe manner and prevent further deterioration. To this point, this is what the structure looks like. Just want to give a few quick photos of the structure. This is the front of the building. You can see the south front of the building and the deterioration of the roof. This is the south side of the building and the deterioration of not only the roof, but the south side of the structure, windows boarded up. A little bit more of the front of the building. That's the rear of the building. And you can just see the deterioration over time with that structure. Staff analysis of this, it appears since the structure was removed from the demolition list, that no work has been completed and the building has deteriorated further. The historic designation of the commercial structure does not preclude demolition. If you have any questions on that, we can discuss. And if the city council were to move forward with the demolition, the structure would be reviewed by the Hutchinson Landmark Commission with the ultimate decision resting on the city council. City staff has inspected the, and declared the structure at 2100 South Bonebreak to be an unsafe and dangerous structure. And that has not changed since 2019 when the building official declared it as such. So it is an unsafe and dangerous structure as defined in chapter 21, Article 7, unsafe and dangerous buildings and the building regulations as adopted by the city of Hutchinson. Staff request tonight is that the city council provide staff direction on how to proceed with this case. Staff is providing the following two recommendations. First, First recommendation would be allow 90 days for the property owner to complete the repair or removal of the two structures. Staff would provide progress, updates regularly to the city council. The other option would be to begin the condemnation process and return to city council for a public hearing. Do you have any questions for me?
The word bling, we use that word a lot in this construction. You know what I mean? That word being bling?
Blight?
Blight. What does that mean?
Well, the word blight really is just another word for deteriorated properties. Those properties that, you know, that have that deterioration and have a high regards for, you know, where those police responses and fire calls and maybe vagrants and, you know, that's just, that's the things that blight is usually associated with.
Okay. Do you know why it was removed from the demo list?
It was a city council decision back at that time, yes, just because at that time, there was discussion about it being on the, or about it getting registered on the Kansas State Historical. And there was also a permit that was applied for at that time as a shoring permit. I do have the engineer plans on file for that. I do not see any record of any of those engineer plans that are being executed or any inspections ever done, but that doesn't mean that they, they weren't. I have not evaluated the building myself on the interior of the structure.
The motion at the time was to take it off the demo list if a permit is issued to do the shoring. Was a permit issued to do the shoring?
Yes, a permit was issued to do the shoring.
That's what I want to make sure, process wise, make sure that's been covered.
Any additional questions or comments for Jason and Mary?
And there's been seven extensions or eight?
I think seven.
Seven is what your, our point said.
I could flip back through that, but I was pretty sure it was seven. Seven times, yes, until March 22.
And so after, so essentially the building has already been declared unsafe and dangerous by council at one point. So doing so-
About the building official, yes ma'am?
Oh, but, but-
It was on the condemnation list by the council as well, yes.
Okay.
So it was deemed unsafe, been dangerous by the building official, and then the same by the council.
So tonight, we are not deeming it unsafe. This is simply a resolution to hold a public hearing.
Yes, tonight is just city council's opportunity to direct us as city staff members on what would you like for us to see out of this property? Would you like to see another 90 days that, you know, we just allow to continue to see what happens with the structure and Ms. Grass going forward with being able to get grants and whatever the opportunities are out there for her to rehabilitate this structure? Or would we move to go to a public hearing in regards to what we do with other commercial structures?
Well, it seems like both could be true at the same time. We could, we could move for a, to hold the public hearing in 30 days or what have you. And that would also be time that would be allowed for her to pursue grant funding and whatnot as well, right?
Sure.
Do you think there'll be in 90 days if we extend it, think anything will be accomplished in that 90 days? As in- We got to be careful with, that's not up to us to decide. I'll just throw that out there.
You know, I don't, I don't think that's something I really comment on, but I do think that, you know, some of these grant processes take time, so.
So we're looking more for a grant to, I guess the owners looking more for a grant to get this accomplished in-
Yeah, we've had some discussions and, and Ms. Susan is here tonight as well, and she's more than welcome to come up during public comment, and I'm sure she will. And, but we've had some great discussions and, and so she's looking for some of those grants and a lot of the grants out there that she's looked at currently are matching grants and, you know, so, you know, there's just a lot of factors in that. And again, we can't take anything based on, like we said during the last meeting, we can't take anything from my perspective based on financials. It's hard for me to do that because I have to be straight physically, code all the time. But, you know, there is some opportunities out here for those grants. What she's been approved by for the Kansas State Historic Site Board and being on the National Register of Historic Places, you know, that opens the opportunity for those grants. And that's, that's what made those grants available to her at this time. I, but, you know, I would not comment to the fact of whether I think-
I'm just asking in regards to what the conversations have been, that's all it was.
Yeah, sure.
That's all, so.
Yeah. Now, the conversations have been, you know, her looking to go out and get these grants now that she's, she's listed.
So we have essentially the same situation that we had with 3405 East Fourth, which is that a certificate of occupancy is going to be required before something can operate in this building, right?
Yes.
This is a commercial building. What's the scope of work that would need to happen to make that happen?
I couldn't tell you 100%. I mean, looking at the exterior of the building, obviously, there's a lot of property maintenance issues as far as cleanup. There's property maintenance issues as far as siding, windows, things of that nature. Obviously, you can see the deterioration of the roof and the collapse of the, the structural collapse of the roof. Now, whether the building itself is structurally sound or not, I couldn't attest to, but-
That would require you to get in the building?
But yes, that would require us to, one, get in the building, and then, two, you know, to have that engineer's report telling us what that engineer thinks, so.
Well, you know, I have worked with Bernard's for a year or two years since this thing is going on. There's a story to this and the rest of the story, and I hope she would come up here and tell us the story, not of how the restaurant got here, but what she's done, since there's a lot of more story added to all this stuff. I know it because I call her almost every week, tell her where you're at, trying to give her encouragement to get this done. So this is a group of people or a lady that went to Topeka and got it on the register. She was working hard to get stuff done and take care of the situation. So if the mayor don't mind, I'd like for her to speak, and when you get done, and let her tell her the rest of the story, if you don't mind. Mayor?
Yeah, absolutely. That's, that's, I think, the next step in the process. If the council has no more questions for Jason and Lady.
Okay.
All right.
Good evening. My name is Suzie Bernard. I'm currently the owner of Bernard's Catering.
Suzie, bring your mic down here.
Catering and concessions. Our family, as well as John Irving's family, has been in Hutchinson for over 100 years. So there's history here. My parents built the building, Bernard's Brothers and Constructions, and back then, that was hard. Why? Because they didn't give out license to black union bricklayers. So every winter, my father would go down to Louisiana and work. They accepted him in the union. He came back up to Kansas, and him and his brothers went to work. My mother was a chef for Stella Dillon, and my father was a valet for Ray Dillon Sr. And they were very helpful in helping my parents to get settled and start in Kansas, to make it where it is. We're currently been at the Kansas State Fairgrounds. This is our 57th year of Bernard's Catering and Bernard's Pit Stop. We love that area out there, and we love Hutchinson, and I want to stay. So my mom didn't really at times cater in Hutch. She had to go out of Hutchinson to find work. So all the little tiny towns around Hutchinson supported Bernard's, as well as truck drivers and travelers. So someone had shared with me that Bernard's have history. At that time, there was no black woman or family that traveled statewide and catered, and my mother did. She had grit. So what she did is join the chambers around the state, and she gave back to the community. So from her catering, we fed Britney Spears, Diamond Rio, Alabama, you pretty much name it. We have fed entertainers at the fairgrounds, and that food came out of that kitchen on Bone Break. Ladies and gentlemen, I know it doesn't look good, but I want it to look better. I've had a lot of things come up. My husband is quite ill right now. He's in KU Hospital Room 10, fourth floor, with no heart. So for the past couple of years, I've been his caregiver and trying to cook. We have one son who wants to work with us and help. John Irving has been on this journey since my parents died to guide my sister and I to stay in business. My sister died of cancer, my mother, my father, and our son hit a train, but he's alive. So you don't need a sad story. You need the building sure to, you need work done, so.
And I talk about that. I first apologize for my voice. It left me, but I hope I can say it loud enough and clear enough for you that I first want to thank the previous council for giving us the time to get to this point. And this point being that, being registered with the Historic Site Board, not only statewide, but nationally. And if you hadn't given us those, that time and those extensions, we would not be to this point. And the state and, and the government, federal government feel that it's worthy enough and that the state thinks they can help her enough to restore it, so it will be a site not only meeting your requirements, but meeting the state and national requirements. And so thank you for giving us this much time. There hasn't been a lot of work done. I think that most of the focus has been on the historic site registration and her, and her husband's health and the family's health. And we're at the point where she's going to have to change and, and put more time and effort on raising some money to be able to match, get the, what is, seems to be the greatest strength is in the matching grants. And I believe that we can raise some money and do that with her giving us more time. It's, I think she's committing today to, or to letting you know today that she's going to commit more time to this project. She's leaving right after this meeting to go to Kansas City where her husband's at now, and he's in very bad shape. And she's shared with me that he'll probably be put in hospital soon. But after saying that, I just want to say, I think with time, and that's that recommendation of the 90 days that, that the, your staff has requested, I think that should give us some time, it's not a lot, but more importantly, it's some time to raise some money. We've not really went out to try to raise money until this point. And so I just want to add that.
Okay, guys, since I've been involved in this project and been pushing you guys almost every week and everything, how many engineers that I know of have looked at this place? You had the state engineer come down here, am I right or wrong?
Yes.
You had an engineer about a year ago, am I right or wrong?
Yes.
Yeah, we hired.
You hired an engineer?
Come twice.
Twice.
So we've had architecture plans, but also-
Yes.
To qualify to be on the national and state historical board, the historical people had to come down and go all through the building-
Yes.
With their architect and their engineer, flashlights, looking at the rafters, everything. And that's what helped us qualify, not only the food and the history, but they had to come down.
I left, I left out one thing. We did this without, other than the council's direction, we did this without very, very little, minimal city staff help, minimal. And I, you've changed staffs and leadership several times, but we've got a better feeling and got more information in one meeting with your current staff than we did in the two years with your previous staffs. And I say that, it even helps my voice to say that, that for the first time, I feel that we have a partner with this city staff, and we can go for, we have a, now we are more of a community effort as opposed to her limited effort in calling me in at the last hour to help her. And I think I got a good feeling about the current staff, and I got a good feeling about the fact that if she gives more time, that we can raise some money.
I do want to say from your comment earlier, there are programs out there, and Jamie Fiore at the Historical Society out of Topeka is willing to help us find the grants and the funds, and no one has really ever did that. So we're happy with the state. The gentleman here, Lawrence, has been very positive. City manager's been positive, so because-
Your real person has been positive.
So we want to do this. We want to make it. I want to serve my mom's potatoes still, so it's in your hands now.
Well, what I'm impressed with you two guys is that you got engineers and you followed up what you're supposed to have done.
This, and I hear say we had engineers and I have-
I know that. I know, I know your whole history, because I've been calling you every week. You have engineers, it's not like you just let the building go. You had, did what you're supposed to do. Now, your husband is sick, and you had a lot of sickness there? I mean, a lot of people get sick, a lot of people unfortunately go in the hospital.
But he wants us to keep going.
I understand that. We're in the fourth quarter. That's what I'm trying to tell you. We're in the fourth quarter.
I'm not upside, and I ain't roughing nobody.
Okay.
Okay.
But I am proud of you getting the engineers and doing, and you have blueprints, right?
Yes, correct, all of that.
So we're getting down to we have to get something done.
So Jamie, like I said, and her, her staff up there is open to help us and to guide us, because they do have to approve some things on our project. So the other big thing is we have a chance to work with the Department of Tourism, which can bring buses off the highway. They can come and eat at our establishment, as, as well as the catering and being open to the public.
So in that case, I want to tell you something. I'm proud of you guys. I gave you my word, and as a city council member, to give a word is not easy. I've thought about this all the time. I gave you my word that I'd help you, and you guys haven't let me down.
Thank you.
You went and got the engineers and stuff, but we running out of time. We need to get the money together, we need to get the grants together, and so forth. So, I mean, you understand what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
I didn't let you down. I came and called you and everything and got with the program, so we have to do something.
We, and I think we'll be able to with, with the support of the city staff. This is the first time we've had city staff support. You got to understand that clearly.
Yeah, I understand.
It was wrong, it was wrong, but that's not, that doesn't take away from the fact that we need to do more, and we have to raise some money. And with time, I think we can do that.
Well, as long as I've been on this council, we have a great staff, we have a great council, we have a great manager now.
But being on the historical, on the national site, this puts us really in the running to get help.
But all, the only thing I'm trying to prove is that you guys weren't sleeping, you were doing what you're supposed to do, and you got slowed down for the sickness, but we have to come to a point where we got to do something.
And like you said earlier, there's different situations, like Mr. Richardson said, different businesses, different problems, and listening to the gentleman before us, you know, I- And listening to the gentleman before us, you know, I have empathy because we don't know everybody's situation. But we want to get open. We want to get things fixed. It's not going to happen overnight, but we've made it this far and I want to keep going. And especially with the help of all of you as well as the Kansas Historical Site and Mr. Irving.
Mrs. Bernard, what work do you think that you would be able to accomplish within the next 90 days?
Number one, I think that we can get that hole shored up, which is a primary concern, the hole in the roof, uh, that has to be taken care of. I think that we can do that. I mean, number one.
But not only that, communication like you brought out earlier, that is really Mr. Fast's necessity. We got to communicate with you guys, let you know what's going on. Next question, Mrs. Goss.
Um, so essentially our option is to move forward with, um, withholding the public hearing, which begins down the process that you just saw with, um, with the 3405 East Fourth Building, um, same process that we went through with the atrium, um, where we allow you to make the repairs yourself, um, or it forces our hand to, um, to take action.
The one difference, uh, one of the, the biggest difference between the atrium or any other project that is not on the historic registry is that in, in anything from this point on that is done to that structure, that may in fact change the structure, has to go through a review with the state by law.
Besides demolition, besides demolition.
No, no.
If we go through with this process.
Anything that you do to the structure that changes its original state, you, uh, we, you just received the email today and the state preservation law, I believe, I think the email stated, says it's to have a relationship with you, that you in fact already have agreed that they will take a look at anything. They'll have to time, they'll have to review anything that's done to that structure to change that structure. I mean, I don't, I don't know. I just want to share that information.
Right. And so essentially by being on the registry, that adds a, a nightmare, a layer of red tape for you guys moving forward. You want to fix the roof, it has to be approved. You want to do shoring, it has to be approved. Every single thing has to be approved. So, that adds time and that adds expense and adds a lot more technical expertise than just you doing it yourself. So, I don't know that you being on the registry has a benefit.
I don't think you're saying that right. I, I think the way I read the email has said that anything that you do to the structure to change it, that, 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 that it must be reviewed by the state.
First.
Which is basically meaning another step and more time. That's all I'm saying. And I think you might check into that to understand the, the prohibition laws a little better. Uh, because I understand, my understanding is that they must review anything that changes the structure. Just plain and simple.
Right. And so what I said was any work that you guys do has to be approved by the state and reviewed by the state. So, that ties up
No, 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 no.
The timeline, it will, I believe that it will. It will tie up the timeline of the repairs that you wish to make. Not only will it tie up, um, because they're going to have to come and either pre-approve plans or they're going to have to come and look at things afterwards. And I don't know who does that, but, um, I, I don't think that it's, the benefit of being on the registry and being opened up for grants might not outweigh the red tape nightmare that it could potentially cause.
We don't see it as a red tape nightmare.
Sure don't. I don't see it as a, as a nightmare at all. I truly don't, I really don't. I agree with what you just said. I believe that per example, we receive a grant from the state. We receive a grant from the state and we fill, we fill out that grant application. The, the only red tape is, is do they approve it or not? The information that we put in the grant, the ingredients of that grant, surely will include, will in, include the roof and then anything else. And if they approve that grant, you have the money. That's not a red tape.
That's progress.
In my mind, that's not a red tape. You hear me?
I think what she's getting at is if you wanted to use modern siding, for example, and the siding that you have on the building right now is not available and you want an, an alternate because you can't get the old style siding, they're going to have to review it and approve what you can do because you can't get that old material anymore that's historically accurate to the building.
Very true, but on the other hand, so does, once the state reviews those things and we do them, then that's where we lean on you guys to go, hey, they've got this, this and this done, but they're waiting on the new siding that is vintage. Does that help? Does that make sense?
I don't know what sway we have with the, with that body.
With, with the historical people?
Yeah.
I hope they're wanting to work with us. They, they have their architects, their engineers, their designers, and a part of this process is we had to say, yes, we're willing to do this. And my father built the building, him and his brothers, like I said. So, I seen all this work being done. There's no shoddy concrete down there. They were concrete men. So, the history of the building is because a lot of this stuff was repurposed.
I have a question.
Yes.
Something that's bothering me. So, three years ago, we drew a line in the sand because there's been a bunch of confusion in regards to changes to city manager and whatnot. And our agreement was a permit would be pulled and shoring would be done for the roof structure to take it off the demo list. Was any shoring done to the building or has it not, has, is any physical improvements been done to the building to make it just, I'm not talking fully finished, I mean, just talking to where it won't collapse on itself? Has it been shored up with those engineer plans like we all agreed to and we all said was fair?
Well, I think that when they covered that hole and the, and the engineer for this came in the second time, the second time, uh, I, I think that was some work done and I think we'll have to.
Covering the hole with the tarp was not what the shored up plans showed.
No, I didn't, I didn't say that.
Because I remember there was some back and forth with Izzy in regards to fasteners and the engineer wasn't communicating with Izzy.
When he came in and gave that, to answer your question, no, other than the engineer coming in and said that it was sturdy enough and covered that hole, but we had to, we had to go with, continue with the plan of action plan of get, acquiring, getting money to, to go to work and fix things. And we, and we're, I think it's, we don't have the money yet and, and with, with
Back to, and I'm sorry I'm interrupting. We have to be really careful. We can hear the story. We can think about a business. We have to be really careful when we get into money on what who can or can't afford anything because you, you could, you could have a million dollars tucked away and be like, it, it doesn't matter what it costs. What matters is what's being done and what we all agree on. Make sure you have a clear path from us, our city, on what needs to be done and then you execute it. You get it done. And that's what I'm wanting to know because we had, we drew, literally said, we drew a line in the sand and the three of us, that's fair. We're going to get a permit pulled. We're going to shore up the stuff that's sagging. We'll get it taken care of. And this process happened. Engineer was pulled in, created shoring plans. I think a permit was pulled. That's why I asked that. I'm asking if, if the work was actually done that that engineer drew up to shore up that building? Because that was the big thing we talked about.
To answer your question, I don't think so. No. And I say, share with you again, she didn't have the money to do it alone, uh, with, with the historic certification as an historic site. Open the door for additional ways to find money. And that's all I'm saying to you is just recently the doors opened and she can find money enough to do some work. She'll have to have a little money, but, but the door is open that she can get some money. And that's all I'm saying. I'll not, and, and in all honesty, no, not much has been done, if any, other than the work toward those applications. And it took a lot to get them completed.
How, how many grants have been applied for since October?
Six.
And how many grants have we applied for since the certification? None.
But here's the deal.
None.
This is 2025. So, you have to understand that grants have a season and usually by the end of October, they cut everything off. And most of the grants now will come available in the spring through like the Department of Commerce and other ones. So, they have a season. You can't, as you know, you can't just get them every month. That, that doesn't work unless it's an Amber Grant for women or something like that.
But it's important to show that you're trying to apply for the grants.
Yes. And that's why we're really sticking close to Jamie and her staff. We text them two or three times a week and, uh, they respond on how they think they can help us.
And I think one, the first grant, uh, that opened up from the state came almost, um, less than a week after the certification as a historic site. Uh, I didn't give us much time. It was due, I can, I don't know, another week or so. And that, that, that's the first one that came. Since then, I think we have, I haven't seen, I haven't seen any personally. Have you seen any since that first one?
They're there, but they haven't opened up.
And I think your staff has also taken a look at, at where their grants available and they also seen that there weren't any. So, so the season is really just starting.
Well, I have a question, a couple of questions. Um, this has been designated as a historical place, historic site. Does this mean that the building, I mean, from the looks of it, looks like the building should be leveled and then rebuilt back. I don't know if, it, did they, can, can anybody help me with that?
They came out and looked at the building and just, and designated a historical landmark.
As is.
As is.
So, that'll tell you something. Does that answer some of your questions?
So, as is, they walked through, looked at all of it. So, it's the building, the food and the history of it.
Okay.
So, there's three or four things that go in to make that historical.
And they know what they're doing. They've, they put us in the engineer here. So, trust me, I think they know what they're doing.
No, I
Had they not gave that, that certification, I wouldn't be here. I wouldn't be trying to help them further.
And it was a long process. I had to write a biography. Mrs. Teal is the assistant athletic coach at Hutch High. Her and her mother are book critics and writers. I sent my paperwork in front first and they sent it back and they said, oh, no, 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 this has to be in a college style paper. So, I contacted Mrs. Teal from Hutch High School and, uh, she put everything together, did it correctly and got it into the state and it was approved.
Without city help, staff help.
Well, I'm
And I ask them to help.
I just, I want you to know that I went back on, on the March 1st, 2022. I watched the entire council meeting. There were all kinds of promises made. You had people standing with you, said they were going to help.
Yes, hedge in harmony.
And zero work has been done. I mean, there was a permit pulled after that meeting and then no work completed.
Okay.
And then, and then November 19th, 2019, 90 day extension granted. February 18th, 2020, 90 day extension granted. August 18th, 90 day extension granted. April 6th, 2021, 90 day extension granted. At, at some point, I
Thank you for your help. I think I already thanked you for your help because those extensions allowed us to have more time to work with the state and federal government and we won that. So, thank you for your previous help. Might sound bad to you, those extensions, but I say hooray. And now we have city hall staff that says they're going to work with us. We did it without you. Understand that clearly, clearly understand that. And I don't want to offend anybody. I don't want to offend anybody, but you can know yourself. You read the history of, of your city management hiring and those kind of things. And by the way, that organization that came forward to help us, they started helping us and next thing you know, they had been approved to help you in your search for your next city manager. So, they can have a lot of time at that point.
But it hasn't been an easy road.
You can do what you want to go backwards, but looking forward, looking forward, I'm saying, we have a shot. And whatever you do, we're going to run with it. Believe me, whatever you do, we're going to run with it. Because had she not got this certification, I wouldn't be here trying to help because it's a tough job. It's a tough job, especially with, without the support of your community. You know, it's a tough job. I look forward to these, whatever days she give us, I look forward to them.
So, they gave us, there's 15 people that stood up on the board and voted. All 15 yays and no nays. And the go, she was talking about 2,000 to 3,000 applications a year and we made the cut. Hooray for Bernard's. We're proud. A lot of people are proud and happy with this. But I know what you're saying. We got to make progress. Does it, do you think it bothers me? Yes, sir, it does. Well, we've had other extenuating circumstances, but Mr. Garza has been with us on this journey. So, yes, we want time. We'll try this time to do better. Long as Jamie and her team guide us, we feel like we have a chance.
We will be better. This will make us, we'll, we'll have a good, we'll take a big shot. I look forward to the challenge, whatever time you get. I stand here saying, let's go for it. With some, can we do, now we have a team. It's not supposed to be getting state help, federal help, then coming back to your community and asking for help again. That ain't the way it's supposed to be. It's supposed to be like this. Now, we really can say we can give a shot at it. I don't have the expertise. She doesn't have. Let's take a shot at it. Join us. We're going to take a shot at it anyway. And then, the one thing I ask you is that whatever you do, don't break our relationship with your staff. Don't do something to break our relationship with your staff. Whatever you do, don't do that. That's the only thing I ask. Don't do that because they can help us. They have some expertise and for the first time, we may be able to use it. Yeah, it's the fourth quarter, but we just made some trades.
So, Mayor?
We got some three point shares.
What, what would you like?
Is Matt, did you have something to add, Matt, this staff?
I can move.
I was just going to touch base on the historic aspects of it. So, the state has deemed us a certified local government. Uh, we've got a relationship with the state because we have a landmarks commission. So, they've given us the review authority for any historic projects. So, if plans were to come in, correct, uh, any, any updates to the building would have to meet the historic guidelines for this structure. Um, they couldn't just go and put a new wood shingle roof on it if it didn't match the historic nature of the property. So, any project that comes in, staff will review it. If needed, it will go to our landmarks commission to review any changes. If one of those changes would be demo, if the city chooses to demo it or if, if the property chooses to demo it, the landmarks commission would review that. They would say, does this keep in with the historic nature of the building? It is the building, not just the site.
Okay.
Um, and demo obviously would not be keeping that historic nature of the building. So, the landmarks commission would say you cannot demo it. At that point, it would come to city council. You would review it on multiple things. You would take their historic, uh, recommendation into it, but you could also take the safety of the neighborhood, um, and all sorts of other aspects and you could overrule their denial of the demolition. Does that answer all of your questions?
I think so.
Let me, uh, say this thing. Um, when you guys got the thing from the state, am I right or wrong? Correct me if I'm right or wrong because I've, I've been right beside you guys, listen, seen all the paperwork. Did you not have the paperwork from the state of Kansas saying you are protected? Am I right or wrong? They said you are protected, right?
We are protected. It's like Matt said.
Okay. Let me show you what I mean by this. You are protected. So, you guys got all happy So you guys got all happy and concerned, we're not going to get torn down.
Right.
Then the state comes back a couple of days ago and says, uh-uh, just like Matt said. And the city did their due diligence, checking into this, because they don't want to get sued later on. You follow me? They want to make sure if you are protected, okay?
But there is a step from Topeka. Even with the demolition, there is a step from the Kansas historical landmark that you have to follow, even if you decide to demo us. Because it has to go back to Topeka. And then they turn around, like Matt said, and they work with you on it. So it's, it just can't be demoed. It has to, there's a procedure and a step. And Jamie's office said that she would email someone here and be glad to work with you if it came to that. So they're willing to work with city council, with the local government. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but my disappointment is in this in the state of Kansas, because I seen the paper.
Yes.
The state of Kansas said you were protected. It did not say on that letter that, unless you have these steps. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct.
It did not tell you that you, this does, you're not protected if it comes with these steps that we have.
Absolutely.
Why didn't the state put that in your letter so your hopes wouldn't have got up? That's my whole point.
I don't know why.
Okay.
But the second, we've got some more, some more emails.
Well, I think, I, I think that when they talked about protection, I, I don't think that they meant that, that they would protect an entity from a safety issue in the community.
Got you.
And I think that that's what changed the, in my career, the city manager. I think, is that what I got out of the meeting with you?
In the meeting we had, we, we talked a lot about applying the code uniformly, that it is a safety issue, the building. But in terms of the protected status, we didn't, we didn't touch on that, in that.
But Mr. Garza, you're right. We felt like the property is protected. But we're going to put forth effort for whatever to get done. But the main thing too is you have to go, like, again, if it, if it, if you want it to go to demolition, you have to get with the National Historical Society. So that's where the protection comes in.
My whole point is this, is that when they told you you were protected, I was excited.
I'm, I'm, was excited and still am.
Okay, but I asked the city manager, and I'm going to tell you this, and I've told you this. I asked the city manager to check out this protection policy, to protect the city that we don't go over and say that we're going to demolish your party, and then we end up getting sued. I told him, and I told you guys this, to check on this protection, and he did. He did his demo, his due digitally, whatever you call that word. And he found out that on the guidelines, it came with that protection, which is great. I mean, but they should have told us that when they gave you the paper.
But I think the city manager, I, I, for some reason, I, I came out of that meeting with you that you, you had the understanding that the state told you that they were not, we were not protected under a safety issue from demolition. That's what I got from that meeting with you.
Yeah, that is correct.
All right. So I think, I think that's, that's, that's our answer, isn't it?
Well, you have to understand the safety part of it. You made a good point. The safety part is where our responsibility comes in.
And it's important.
Okay.
Okay.
So we have to make that safe, we have to make that building safe.
And part of the substance of the conversation too was that staff did appreciate the cultural aspect of the building as well as, you know, Suzie's legacy that she wants to leave for her family.
My mother's legacy.
Correct. The legacy of your family. So we did talk a lot about that. But the general substance of the conversation was that the building itself, the condition of the building is unsafe. And so when we look at applying codes, that they, we apply them uniformly. It's, it's a conversation we've had throughout tonight. So that was a large part of that conversation that we had, so.
Mrs. Bernard, what work can you promise the council that you will take steps toward over the next 90 days?
I'd be the pardon man, Melissa Christen.
What work do you anticipate completing in the next 90 days? If we grant you a 90-day extension?
Completed?
Or just what-
I mean, ideally, what could you have done in 90 days?
I'd like to think that we could raise enough money that we apply for some matching grants, is what I'd like to think we can do. And I think, I think that's, that's the first step, other than covering that hole. But the first real step of doing something that will mean something is that you have to raise enough money that we can apply for a matching grant. And I think that, and 90 days is saying that, that's really, that's really aggressive because that means that there are going to be some grants that come out that we could meet, that meet our needs.
So in 90 days, could you tarp the hole on the roof?
Yeah.
Keyword, she said tarp the hole. You want 90? So what would be the date from today?
I'm asking, like, what can you promise that you will have done if you come back here in 90 days? Because the-
Just what he said. Oh, you want to repeat what you, what you said to her?
I think that we can tarp the roof, number one, and we can raise some money that will be available for matching grants. If a grant comes out tomorrow and we apply for it and win it, I, I, you know, I think that would take more than 90 days. I would, I would guess the process would do. It's, there's a chance, but, but, but in the next 90 days, if a grant comes forward and we are able to apply for it, and thus far, in, in my research, there has not been a grant that wasn't a matching grant. And the kinds of things they were asking for, it appeared to me, it would take about $25,000 to meet the needs of those grants that I've seen thus far.
Okay.
And we don't have that. So, and we've yet to see a grant that didn't have a match yet. But I know there's some in there, but we have yet to see.
Let's be realistic here.
I'm trying to.
So in your application that you sent to, to the state for the registration, you included engineering information. You said that you had hired two engineers recently, right? Would you be willing to share that information with the city?
You should have it on file.
It's not in the agenda packet. That doesn't mean that we don't have it on file, though.
If you don't have it on file, I suggest you go to the state and you contact their engineer who came and looked at the building prior to certifying us. I think that would be the most important thing. That's what, that's what made me, the state's trying to help her. Is because they said that it deserves the recognition as a historic site. And that means something. Do you mean that, that, that this will be anything black? In my life of being a resident of Hutchinson, grew up here, and what happened, what you call it, here. Anything to, to, to touch and, and see and feel, it would be a great thing. So I want to be able to have something for being here, because there were some black people here. I mean, and we have nothing. And I'd like for the black people who are here today and in the future to, to have something. And, and it should be something worthy of recognition, not what's at the date. But I'd like to take a shot at finding that something to make it happen, and that's, that's what I guarantee you. I guarantee I bust my butt to try to find something, because I, I know how to work with city staff.
Mrs. Bernard, what I'm asking is, would you be, would you be willing to share the information that you submitted to the state? Because it sounds like you, you have it readily available. You just submitted it all in November, October, what have you. Could you be willing to share that information with our staff?
Well, actually, it was submitted over a year ago. It takes 18 months, everyone, to be approved. So it just didn't hap, and October is when we were-
That's when you received the notification that you were approved?
Yeah, the state level. And then-
I misspoke regarding the timeline.
No problem.
Would you be willing to share the information in the packet that you submitted to the state from the engineers that you hired that you sent?
I asked you, if you have concerns, contact the state and contact their engineer. He's the one that reviewed it. He's the one that made me want to work with it. Why wouldn't you do that? Why won't you say that and do that? Why?
I'm not trying to save my property. This is your property that you're trying to save. I'm asking if you have some information that you would submit to our staff. It sounds like you've hired two engineers out of your own money. Okay, I don't have it. It is not in the agenda packet.
Actually, we don't say that.
What do you mean? How are you standing? Don't your staff have it? I mean, you, we submitted it to you.
Mr. Lady, do you have information from the engineers that they have hired?
I know we have the information from the shoring, the engineer that was hired for the shoring project.
In 2022?
In 2022, yes.
And how long is that?
Beyond that, I'm not 100% sure, but I will definitely look into all the files tomorrow morning and take a look to see what we got. I have seen the, the shoring plans that were presented in 2022, yes.
Because we can go in further unless we have an architect and an engineer.
The shoring could be done with those plans.
Yes.
Are, are, like, they don't expire or require an additional?
We're not, we haven't updated our code since then. Still 2018 IBC and whatnot. I don't see why it would.
If the building structure has changed?
If the building structure's fallen, disrepaired, it'd be a different story.
But like Mr. Erving said, for now, we will tarp it and work on grants, and then work on the shoring after that. Because we need financing.
Do you think you can get a grant for shoring? Or will it be a grant for the wall?
We're going down, I mean, I-
Yeah.
We're going down that slippery slope on financial stuff again.
I want to, well, then I, I won't. I just want to, I think what Stacy was trying to say when these things, the price doubles or triples when you get it designated historical. I, I, I want to defend you a little bit because you got beat up. I've, I've talked to two people that have done historical things because they, they were granted historical money, all the stuff. They said they'd never do it again because it was so expensive. Now, it does open up grants and those things, but it comes with way more strings.
You saying we shouldn't do it?
I'm, I'm not-
You saying we shouldn't do it?
It's not, it's not our call financially.
No, it's not our call financially. We're talking about the building that is unsafe, deemed unsafe. So, but I, I just, you kind of got on Stacy a little bit about trying to explain that. I'm trying to help explain it.
I didn't get on her, and I didn't mean to get on her.
Okay.
What do you mean get on her?
Well, I felt like-
Apologize if you think I did anything. I apologize. You think I did anything like that? I don't do that. I'm saying, sometimes I get aggressive with my answers because some things click with me that, that I want to, if I didn't say it right the first time, I'm going to say it a second time. You said it's the fourth quarter. Well, let's make it the fourth quarter. I mean, really? Let's go after it. I said, let's us. That's all I'm saying. I don't get us. And whatever you do, and, and I'm not just jumping on Stacy. Y'all, all of you should take a look at it, because I'm saying we didn't have city help till now. I'm dead serious. And we got it now. And we got it now.
Part of this is our fault.
No.
No, part of this is our fault, and our city-
That part, I got you, I got you.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with you.
I'm not going to blame, I'm not going to blame or give excuses. I was trying to say that, think, I said, I started up, I said, thank you for what you did. Because had you not given us time, we wouldn't be here today. That's plain and simple. And that's a heartfelt thank you. Thank all of you. And I mean that. I mean that. I mean that, because they wouldn't be here. But we're not, we've got to play harder. And we haven't done our job. And we haven't done our job to answer for Mr. Richardson. You're right.
Yeah, that's the one thing I'm really disappointed in on the situation.
Yeah, we haven't done our job. We haven't done a job. You're correct.
Because it was, we can do that. We appreciate it. We go out there and take care of it.
You are correct. You are correct. You are correct.
So you wanted to know what we could possibly do in 90 days, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so tarp the building and apply for grants. Who would you want me to report back to? Mr. Garza, Mr. Faust, or all of you?
You would be here again in 90 days.
Okay.
But I don't know, you would have to work with Mr. Lady and Mr. Williams about the tarping and whatnot. I don't know what standards that requires or any of that.
I, I would throw something out there. I, my opinion is to start the condemnation process. That doesn't mean it's getting torn down. Condemnation process simply saying, you're going to have to repair it or it's going to get torn down. Because I want it to go to public hearing. I want to hear what the community says about getting behind this project or not. I want to have a public hearing.
So-
Then even after that public hearing, there's a time period we can set on when repairs start. But I would like to see the process move forward with the public hearing.
I would too, and, and like, has been alluded to, excuse me, I'm speaking, ma'am.
If we hired a contractor and got the process-
Excuse me, I'm speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so as was stated by multiple people on the council and from city staff, applying the codes and applying this process uniformly is important. If we begin with the hearing, then that gives you time, but it also holds you accountable. So all we're saying tonight, all we're deciding is either we extend this or we hold a public hearing. And holding that public hearing is the same as what, what occurred in 2019. So.
Well, I'd like you to, to, to extend it to that 90 days and then do something. I would not like to come out of this meeting going forward in the fourth quarter saying that you're not our partner. And I think starting the condemnation process says that, is what I think.
If we are applying the codes uniformly and we gave you 90 days and, and the, all you have accomplished is tarping a roof and applying for grants, and we already, in our conversation, said that funding and, and money was really not something that we're considering right now. That's not where we're, I don't know.
Be our partner for 90 days. How about being a partner in this effort? Because you'll be here for all time if we success, have some success. If we play the fourth quarter right, we will be here for all time. And we're looking at all time. And we're looking at making you happy and what have you, and let you start the condemnation process. And let the community hear and hear you say that we started the condemnation process. However, we're his partner to try and make it happen. That ain't cool. And you know that's not cool. So if you do it-
If we are applying the code uniformly, then that means that the person who was just here from 3405 East Fourth, we held him to a much different standard for 30 days of work. And all of the work that he was doing-
He's not the same thing as us.
I know.
He's not.
We're trying to apply the code.
He's not the same thing as us. I don't, and I don't know what his relationship with the city was in his journey. I know what it was for us. I know what it was for us. You know what I mean? I know what it was for us. I don't know if you should put a time limit on something, as long as it's safe. I think that's the main issue. Is it safe? That's the concern.
It is not safe right now.
That's right.
It has not been safe for years.
We have to do. That's what we have to do. That's the real thing. Don't put it out in the community that you started condemnation. You're saying out loud that we're not his partner.
We've been a partner since 2019 on pushing this out and pushing this out, pushing this out, pushing this out.
But you know, it's been a lame duck partner. We had to get some trades in staff to make the, we're here in the fourth quarter, and we just made the trades for the new staff.
The owner's is not on staff to do the work for you.
No, I'm not talking about owners. I'm talking about the strength that you have when you have community help from the city. The strength that you have in the grant-making. They, they, they see things that we don't see. They hear things. They know where they've been. They have connections. There's all kinds of things that make a difference in staff.
Either decision we make, it's not stopping you from being able to do the work and do what you need to do.
I did not make excuses for what we haven't done. I'm talking about going forward.
Going forward, it, it doesn't change anything going forward. All it does-
How do you know? It does change. Do you, you know what?
If we go forward the condemnation process, you still have to repair it or not. Whether we push it 90 days and make a decision.
I'm talking about the message you send to the city. I mean, if you're going to do what you're going to do, you have to do it.
It's, it's not condemned until after the public hearing. Then a decision will be made.
I never want to hear that stuff. I'm telling you, what message does that send to the community? That's all I'm saying.
Let me ask something. So- Let me ask something. So, you're wanting us to come back to you for a public hearing from the community? Okay, and so hearing from the community will help you base your decision or?
It might bring more information that we're not seeing right now and how this property affects you and others within the community, either positively or negatively, and you can spread your message even more to the people on the public hearing.
Yeah. I don't, I, I, I mean, we can spread that message fine enough. And I, I just don't like the fact that they're putting something out there that's so negative. I mean, the average person.
Mr. Irving, I, my mind was, I, I'm being very open minded as far as I'm concerned because my mind.
Good, good.
Six months after our meeting on March 1st.
Good.
When we said, we had an agreement. This is gonna happen. Thank you very much. We're gonna make it happen. And then it didn't happen. Because that was our agreement. And it's been three years.
It's been what?
It's been three years.
Oh, well, I've been here three years.
Yeah, March 1st, 2022 was almost three years ago.
So you want, you want us to come back when?
Uh, there isn't a motion on the table, so we don't have a date.
It would have to be published for at least 30 days before a public hearing would happen. I think it's March 4th.
And you're saying you want to see something in 90 days is what you're saying?
No, I was using 90 days as a benchmark of what you could, what you thought you could accomplish within 90 days. I would tell you that I believe it would go a long way to prove to the council how serious you are about making these repairs. If we do set a hearing right now, um, for 30, for March, it sounds like beginning of March would be the date.
We don't have to do it at 30 days.
Right, so.
So, in 30 days, I'm confused.
So, so let me finish. So if we set a hearing tonight that starts us on the condemnation process, does not mean there's a firm timeline, um, being established tonight. That is still out in the future at some point. However, if we set a hearing date, a public hearing date, and you came to council at that point and you already had accomplished some fundraising and some, you maybe provided a timeline of grants that you intend to apply for and believe you're eligible for, you tarp the roof, you do some other cleanup. I don't know. It looks like there's some other cleanup around the property to do as well that would have nothing to do with your landmark um, status. That work would go a long way, I think, to the council, seeing it and, and then deciding how long to give you or how to move forward from there. Whether it's an extension or, or whatever. So, um, I, I'm not sure that more discussion is getting us any further in consideration of, uh, the point that is on the, um, on the agenda tonight.
So. We would need more than 30 days to get grants. I'm being honest. And you want, you want us to come back within 30 days? That's rough.
Right, my point was not that you need to prove that you have grants or that you have funding, but if in 30 days you, you could say, here's a list of grants that we believe we are eligible for and intend to apply for, and here's the dates that they open up. And here's the gal that we're working with in Topeka who is going to help us with those.
And here's the physical work we've been able to accomplish in 30 days at the, at the location.
That is helpful to us to prove that you are doing the things that get you to compliance.
There's been nothing done in three years to show compliance to code.
Yes. So, John. I mean, we really have no choice.
Exactly. So, you two can go and have a conversation about that, but ultimately it is our decision of whether or not, uh, what we do right now at this point.
Again, I was, I started with thinking you forgive us the time. You know what was accomplished in that time. And I also ended with, I, I look at the, the staff recommendation. I like it, I'd like to, I like what they said about this extension of the 90 days. That's what I looked, I thought I saw. And am I correct that, that, what is the staff's recommendation?
So the staff's recommendation was guidance from the council to either provide, uh, 90 days or to, um, proceed forward with the condemnation process. So, the, the direction staff is looking for was guidance from the, uh, city council.
So either 90 days or the other.
Set a public hearing.
Which even at that public hearing, you say, okay, now you have another 90 days or however much time to get the repairs done or to do work on the property.
John. So, now it's, you're gonna give us 90 days from what he said?
We can set the public hearing for whenever we would like.
So the next step is that we need to have a motion from a council member.
To do what?
Help me.
To one of those two options.
Correct.
I would move to approve a resolution for public hearing regarding 2100 South Bone Break and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Yes.
Okay. They're going for a public hearing. There's, there's not no condemnation or nothing like that. We're one step at a time. We're going for a public hearing to hear from the public right now. During that time, it's go with the public hearing, in my opinion. Go with the public hearing and get to work on the building and come with all the information you have and come back here. At, did they, uh, a public hearing, do they have to, to be here or not, or what?
It's preferred that they're here, yeah.
So when you plan on doing the public hearing? In three days or what?
There's a motion that needs voted on.
Okay.
So, please vote.
What's the motion?
It's a public hearing.
Okay.
Should I say what date? In the motion?
We have that.
Well, we want to know what it is, Mr. Brown.
It'd be March 4th.
March 4th.
Oh, we've come this way, guys. I'm gonna have to vote. We need to have a hearing and then we move on. I say yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
So at this public hearing, what do we do? Say the same things we said here or show you what we did?
And if you have more information.
Staff will connect with you, um, I would assume tomorrow, um, to let you know what the next steps in the, in the public hearing process are.
Here's the deal. You guys, I didn't have trust. You've got to have trust. Public hearing doesn't mean you're gonna get tore down. Public hearing, just keep going while we're going and, and just keep doing what we gotta do. You came too far. So, hearing on March 4th and do what you can.
Thank you all.
Yep.
Would we like to, um, go into executive session or?
Get a report of city officials first.
Do we complete that first? Okay. Um, so this is item 10A, um, report of city officials. Mr. Garza, you go first.
I knew you were gonna do that to me. We'll start the other side.
Actually, I don't know what IT has, uh, written down. I'm basing this off of Greg's.
That wasn't Greg's. That was IT.
Well, that's what I. You're first.
I say you do what you want, Stacy.
Yeah, you're the boss.
Well, you're first.
Me?
I already said it.
Oh, my God. All right, first of all, on the, uh, my meeting that I have every week, I was trying to get it this week, uh, the 21st, but I couldn't get it done because I had other stuff to do. My next meeting, I'll have a place and everything get that settled and I'll let you know when the meeting is. So. Uh, other thing too, everybody that's come here, I appreciate you listening to me, bring them on and that's just the way it is. I'm sorry, but that's life. Other than that, that's all I have for now.
I really appreciate our IT department and that's all I have tonight.
Okay. Scott.
I really appreciate everyone coming out tonight to our council meeting. Yep. That's all I have.
Congratulations to HCC. Thank you for staff for the work that you try to do. It's appreciated.
Um, apparently you guys forgot that we had the, uh, employee appreciation lunch that you were all at. So that was a really cool event, um, that we got to attend and, um, give our appreciation to, um, staff and, and recognize them for their milestone and anniversaries of employment, which included, um, all the city staff, but also, um, fire and, and police. So that was really cool to be a part of. Um, congratulations to everybody. It's amazing that the people who show up to work every day at the same place for 30 years. I've, I've barely been alive 30 years, wink, wink. So I don't get it, but that's really cool and I think it really speaks to the culture that the city, um, has, um, that it's a great place to work. So, um, I think Chief Burley, you were on there for 30 years, right? 25, okay. You don't look a day over 26. Um, and then, uh, I don't know, it was a couple of days after that. Um, we had the, uh, chamber annual breakfast. Um, I think you were all there. I had tunnel vision. I don't remember seeing anybody in the crowd because I had to speak and I was so incredibly nervous, but it was a really great event. We had 175, um, city staff there and, um, sold out crowd. And that was the first time, um, that city staff has been, to my knowledge, invited and welcomed to that event, to that magnitude. Um, so I hope that they appreciate, um, just being included and, and the work that the council is doing to, um, support them and, and, uh, not only, um, with the chamber and at that event, but also within the community. I see that we're already filling potholes in town. Um, if anybody is still watching this at home, please do report those through C Click Fix. And that's the only way that we know that they're there. And I'm sure I'm forgetting something, but, um, uh, it's been a long day. So, that's all I have. Mr. Viegas, I will let you take it away.
Uh, thank you, Mary. I was gonna cover those items as well. Um, the other remaining item, dates, trying to narrow that down for our joint meeting with USD 308. Um, some dates available, March 4th, March 18th, April 1st, or April 15th. I don't need to know an answer now, but I'll just check with you guys throughout the week, um, so we can narrow that down and I'll get that back to Dr. Johnson. Uh, that's all I have.
Excuse me, is this for the school meeting with us? Is that what you said?
Yeah, it's a, it'll be a joint meeting with them.
Okay.
Um, item 12, we have, uh, executive session.
How long are you thinking it'll take?
30?
Thinking 30.
Probably 30.
Okay. Um, I move to reassess into executive session pursuant to the consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship exception. In order to discuss taxation issues, the open meeting to resume in the city council chambers at 9:38 PM.
Second.
Richardson?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Your motion to adjourn.
It's moved.
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Faust.
Yes.
Mengers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
We are adjourned.
He didn't ask if there was any discussion.